Go ahead with some of the briefings and, you know, budget considerations, you know, to be transparent and let you know what's going on. Mr. Bellucci will not be joining us today. He will be home enjoying us on his television set. But he, you know, wanted you to know that he is fully engaged and out here. But if it's okay, Mr. DeHaney, I understand we have a special guest that wants to come and speak to us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I got two changes to articulate to you. The first one is that our real estate assessor, Ron Agnor, will not be able to present today. So he sent along his presentation. So just wanted to let you know that this item that's on the agenda will not be able to, will not be presented to council. And also, Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to amend the agenda and have Chief Nudigay come and provide counsel with an update on the substation and some of the benefits that we've realized since the police department has relocated into that area.
That would be more than appropriate.
Okay. Chief Nudigay?
Chief, good to see you.
Mayor, counsel, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come over and provide some clarification around the substation. There's a lot that's been put out there. I'm not going to say it's been inaccurate, but it definitely lacks context. And I know the media's kind of reached out to a lot of different folks, and I apologize because if they had reached out to me, I could have given them what the vision is, what a substation really is, and what our measures of success are. So before we talk about the substation, I really want to talk about the block. So when I first got here, and I asked the folks, I asked our staff, what are our biggest challenges? Where do we really have crime and disorder? The block. And then when I sat down with our folks down at the resort area, our business partners, they confirmed what our staff was saying is that we struggle with the block. So when we had an opportunity last year to gain a foothold in the block, I came to this council, and you were very gracious to lease that property. And since we have done that, I think we've seen some great results. So we acquired the lease for the property at 2112 Atlantic for what was the box back on June 1st of last year, 2021. Now, it took several months for us to get it to a place where it was even remotely habitable. But what I really want us to focus on is from that June 1st time that we took it over. So from June 2020 through June 2021, there were 545 calls for service in the 2100 block of Atlantic. From the time that we acquired the property, June 2021 through April 22nd of this year, not quite a full year, but we are getting very close, we have seen a 21% decline in calls for service in just the block. That is 115 fewer calls for service than our men and women have to respond to. And how bad of a problem has the block been in years past in this city? June 2018 to June 2019, 1,153 calls for service in just one city block in our city. So since we acquired the property and we've had a visible presence in the block, reported violent crime is down 83% compared to the previous year. Since we acquired the property and have had a visible presence in the block, shootings are down 66% compared to the previous year. The number of shooting victims, down 75%. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm speaking about just the 2100 block of Atlantic in the side streets, not the entire resort area. So we can see how problematic this has been for us as a city all along. So what I would say to this council is the acquisition alone has already paid dividends in being part of our effort to reduce crime and disorder at the oceanfront. And I think there is some misunderstanding about a substation. The substation is never intended to be that year-round, 24/7 mini precinct. It is to us to gain a foothold in the block and for us to provide a presence for our officers during the resort season, on the weekends when we're upstaffing. And it's really to give our officers a place to take a break, take a phone call, use the restroom, maybe a brief meeting. But we really don't want our officers sitting in a substation. And the things that I just outlaid are all things that previously, without the substation, they would all have to go back to the second precinct to do all those things. And every time they leave the resort area to go back to the second precinct, we'd lose exactly what we want, is that visibility in our oceanfront area. And Vice Mayor, Councilman Brown, I know you were inside the substation the other day with Captain McBrien. I was down there on Sunday as well. And I think we can all agree, there's some substantial things that need to be fixed for us to occupy it more than what we would like. It's more than just a coat of paint. It's more than just an amateur handyman, some of the things that I've heard, can go in and fix the things going in. There are some considerations that we need to take a look at. There's some cracks in the ceiling beams and some warp beams that we're definitely concerned about. But while we wait for that to get repaired, the good news is the planning department has affirmed that we can use the substation exactly like we envisioned it all along for brief periods of time, 30 to 60 minutes at a time, for our officers to go in and recharge, especially those officers that are out there on the weekend, on foot patrol, on bike patrol. And that is to keep our officers in the resort area, where they're visible, where they're engaging, and where they can recharge. And I do think that this is happening. And that's what we're achieving. And this weekend, your officers were highly visible. They were highly proactive. And what they were doing is engaging the individuals that are bringing firearms illegally to the oceanfront and impacting them before they pull the trigger. Councilman Branch, if you don't mind, can you just pass those around, please?
Be happy to.
Those are just some of the 25 firearms that were seized this weekend, which by all means was incredibly peaceful. So our precinct crime suppression teams are doing a fantastic job of going down there on the weekends when we need them and doing proactive police work. And I think we really have to acknowledge them. And we have to acknowledge the men and women of the PD. As I've said it before, and I will continue to say it, when other cities have defunded their police, they've demoralized their police, proactive policing has ceased, that is not happening in the beach. They have the support of this council, they have the support of this community, and they're being incredibly proactive. And I think right there tells you everything that we need to know, that we want a safe oceanfront, and the PD is going to send a message that we are not going to tolerate gun violence, and we're not going to tolerate shooting violence and overall violence. So if you recall, when I presented the 2021 crime statistics at the end of the year, and I showed a large spatial clustering of shooting violence at the oceanfront in the 227 zone, is how we record that. So it gives me great pleasure to tell this council that we have not had a homicide in 227 zone or our oceanfront in over a year. Our last shooting in the oceanfront was June 19th of 2021. It's been 311 days since we have had a person shot in the oceanfront. So I think that kind of, you know, the narrative that we hear about continual gun violence at the oceanfront is not spelled out with the data. So how have we been able to achieve this? I thank you. I thank you for acquiring this property because we now have 21% more time for our officers to be proactive and go after the folks that we need them to go after instead of spending time responding to the additional 115 calls for service that we were having at this location. And I'll finish up real quick that I know that $5,000 a month, it is a lot of money. It's a lot of money to some. But I would couch it in the frame that compared to what we would spend in overtime for a month, we're easily going to surpass that compared to the amount of money that we pay the officers to go to court for the significant number of arrests that they were making in the block can easily surpass $5,000 in a month. And I would say in the middle of the summer, when we're our busiest, we can surpass that in a week's time. So I thank council for this investment. It allows me to deploy our limited resources, which is our personnel, to be much more proactive, which we are seeing the results. And, you know, I understand being a good steward of the public's money, but anyone that says that this was not a wise acquisition, I tell them that the data speaks otherwise. So we will continue to use the substation exactly like we pledged to this council to recharge our officers so that they can go back in the community, be visible, be engaging, take the guns off the street before the trigger is pulled so that we can get the results that we want. And I thank you for your time.
Rosemary.
Thank you so much for coming and speaking with us today. And you're right, Mr. Branch and I toured the substation on Friday, and, you know, Captain McBrien was there. And we can't thank you enough for what y'all are doing. When this opportunity came up, we were very enthusiastic to get in there because we had been waiting a very long time to get a foothold in that particular piece of real estate. So I think our concern was if there's anything that you need to do now before the season really officially opens up to make it even more habitable, you know, maybe getting Wi-Fi in there, all those crisscross boards that were at the top and getting a drop ceiling in, and, you know, some things like that to make it much more comfortable for our officers, and some furniture if they need that. Probably going to have some furniture from this building.
It's in the hallway right there.
We'll go get the pickup truck, yes.
But we also did hear that there could possibly be some improvements being made to that whole block of buildings.
I'll speak to that.
And if that's the case, maybe we might not want to spend a huge amount of money towards this and wait to see if that's going to pan out.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I got a team from our economic development department are reaching out to the building owners right now to get a better sense of what that looks like. And we'll update if we need to make any changes according to that plan.
But we want our officers to be safe, first of all, and, you know, give them a level of comfort, you know, that they do have a place right there that they can go in and do the things that they need to do. So we, please let them know how much we appreciate them. And this information that you just shared with us is invaluable. I mean, it's really why we're all here, is to keep our city safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Rocky and then Guy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for those numbers. That's awesome. That's up and running. It's knocked it down 21%. One thing that I find more concerning is the pictures you gave us of what our men and women are going up against. These illegal guns and these illegal weapons, extended magazines, countless ballistic ammo. This is what our men and women are going up against each and every night. And I can't thank them enough to be confronted with this. And I challenge anybody to just look at these pictures and just, these illegal guns in our city and on our oceanfront is just unbelievable. And hats off to the men and women of the police department for keep hammering away and getting these off the street. I see every day on social media where they've got a few more off the street. But every gun, let's get them off. If you come to Virginia Beach and you possess an illegal firearm, you're going to the Crossbar Hotel because Virginia Beach PD is going to catch you and bring you there.
Thank you, Councilman.
So thank you very much, Chief.
And Rocky, it's nice to know you're the hotel manager.
I know a guy.
Guy.
Speaking of that, I was just wondering, do we have any way of gauging, even if it's, you know, just your basic observation of what's happening to these people that are being arrested and having their guns? What typically charges are being brought? How, and what's the, and what's being the process for dealing with those people?
And that's something that I've asked us to start tracking recently because we're making so many arrests, is to find out where we are on the backend with, you know, are we getting convictions?
Yeah, it seems to me that's the important thing. We've got to get, we've got to follow those, make sure we're forgetting the convictions, and I certainly hope we are. I can't imagine these arrests are not well documented.
And Councilman, I know that-
And letting the public and therefore potential miscreants know that it's not simply we're taking your guns away, we're taking your freedom away.
You know, we're getting ready, they're working on a press release today that, you know, we talk about the illegally possessed and illegally utilized guns and how they acquire them. We just had an individual plea out to the illegal trafficking of the firearm, buying it for someone else. They pled out today, and they were sentenced to five years. So I think that does send a message, and that's something that we'll be pushing out because I think it's important for the community to know that, that there are consequences, and you will be held accountable for diverting a legally possessed item into the hands of someone that should not possess it.
Well, good. And if I could make one more, just a comment on your issue about the payment of rent before we could bring the property up to standard. I don't know a lot about policing. I don't even know a lot about criminal law, even though I'm a lawyer. I've got a good sense of it. But one thing I do know about is business stuff. And what we have spent and expended, invested in this property in terms of the expected return and value is not even close. I have, do not have the slightest concern about the amount of money that we have spent. It is a minimal amount considering what we get out of it. And it's a very typical lease acquisition transaction where sometimes you have to pay money. If you've got a particular piece of property that you need, sometimes there are leases that need to be bought out to get to where you are or others. That's just the market that we're in. So it was a perfectly normal transaction. I don't know how, well, I do know how. I know how we, that gets blown up. But I just wanted to assure members of the public, that part of it I'm very familiar with. And our investment in that was a bargain at the price we paid. And I would do it again in a heartbeat, that from a commercial, just a commercial transaction situation. Forget the policing that we needed and the very, how much we needed that particular spot. It would have been a normal transaction for any new acquisition if somebody wanted to get into that spot. So I just wanted to make that statement on your watch. Thank you, Chief.
Councilman, we greatly appreciate it, appreciate you supporting us. That when we said that we needed this property to make a dent, you stepped up for us, and we're trying to deliver on the backend, and I think we are.
Limwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you want to go where the biggest problems are. And historically, that area has been our number one calls for service area at the oceanfront. So that's the proper place for the substation. And we did take the tour, and Captain McBrien has used it to assemble all of the adjoining bar owners, restaurant owners for meetings. And instead of what used to be an us versus them sort of situation, everybody's now on the same sheet of music, and they want to upgrade and uplift this area to the point where the adjoining two restaurants next door have expended over $400,000 in improvements to fix their places up. They're now open during the daytime, doing some lunch business. We, one of them was the Old Tiki, which used to do a lot of lunch business back in the day. But now they're back in the lunch business again. And so just the presence alone has uplifted both the sentiments of the people there. They want to do additional things. In fact, we've got to talk to the manager about some of the ideas they have with putting decorative lights. And, I mean, they want to invest money, and they're thrilled that there's a presence there as well. So I think we've more than gotten our bang for the buck just from that. And whoever conceived of that idea of putting that substation there, that was a brilliant idea.
I will let them know. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Chief, you know, sincerely thank you. I mean, it was really encouraging hearing the stats that we haven't had a homicide in over a year. And you don't become the safest city overnight. It takes a sustained effort. It took in your efforts and experience, the experience of the other officers. And I'll tell you what, the most heartening thing I've heard over the last couple of weeks are a number of calls stating that they noticed at the oceanfront that the relationships between the police and the people, it's like a different place. It, you know, it's cordiality, it's not confrontational. You know, we saw it at the Shamrock Festival, College Beach Weekend last time. You know, I got a comment from a gentleman yesterday that saw people high-fiving the cops, and the cops are, you know, engaging and talking to them. And, you know, it's a tremendous, you know, move forward in what we're trying to do. And in terms of the value of the property, there's an accounting term, you know, it's called goodwill. And it actually adds to the price of a building, even though it might be a cesspool thing, because of a reputation that it has. And I think what you're doing is bringing a tremendous amount of goodwill there. You know, I think it, you know, just sends up a beacon of safety to a lot of people that are out there. Once again, statistics speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, Mr. DeHaney.
Mr. Mayor, remember, members of council at this time, our director of planning, Bobby Tahan, will come and give council a budget briefing on the planning, depending planning items that'll come before you at your next council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, Carolyn Smith and I will be going through the, a quick overview of the planning items scheduled for May 3rd and May 17th. On May 3rd, you have two item, two planning items, with one of them the comprehensive plan amendment regarding the stormwater review for discretionary applications. And the second is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding in-ground pools at the oceanfront, which was continued indefinitely by council almost a year and a half ago. Item number one is the resolution to amend the City of Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan to address citywide stormwater impacts for discretionary land use applications. As the city council all knows, you remanded this back to the Planning Commission with a 60-day timeline for them to reach back out to the public. On March 9th, the Planning Commission held a public comment, and there were three speakers in attendance that indicated a desire to approach the amendments to the plan holistically during the upcoming scheduled update of the comprehensive plan. And they also noted that they had concerns that the Comprehensive Plan update would impact development in the city. On the late April 11th Planning Commission public hearing, comments were again received from the public, and there were four speakers who noted that the preliminary review process can be too costly and time-consuming prior to even obtaining a city council decision for that discretionary application. And they believe that the long range, the language is not appropriate for the Comprehensive Plan as a long-range planning document. And they also questioned if the stormwater regulations are in place and are required to be met in the plan review process, why does it need to be in the Comprehensive Plan? The Planning Commission discussed the amendment and noted their concern. There was noted concern about eroding public trust with the, with this Comprehensive Plan amendment if it were not adopted. However, they voted seven to two to deny or to recommend denial of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment as the majority of the planning commissioners felt that it would inhibit economic development and agreed with the speakers that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the language should not be in the Comprehensive Plan. Item number two is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that was indefinitely deferred by city council in 2020 as it was requested by staff to provide an opportunity to get additional input from the staff of the Department of Public Works and to assure that the regulation did not conflict with the requirements for the seawall flood protection project that exists along this area. Just very quickly about this language, this text amendment would reduce the rear yard setback along the Atlantic Ocean for in-ground swimming pools, jacuzzis, hot tubs, or similar structures to a five-foot setback, which is similar to the setback that is allowed in the North End Overlay District. This is a little gap of area that is between the oceanfront resort zoning district and the North End Overlay District that does not have this reduced setback. The proposed language, again, would reduce it to a five-foot setback in this area in R-75 district that's adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. And there was language that was only codified, even though it was already required because it was a review that's required by the federal government, that stated that if the director, unless waived by the Director of the Department of Public Works, a Army Corps of Engineer review would be required of any pool that would go into this area to assure that it doesn't conflict with the requirements of the flood protection or seawall that exists on the property. We worked this through with the, with Public Works staff, and they're comfortable with this language again. The language, though, there was some added, it was no, there was no substantive language changes because the requirement already existed, it would, to meet a federal requirement. We just codified it for clarity in this text amendment. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval. On May 17th, there are 13 items scheduled. And one of them was an item that was deferred by the council on April 5th. Item number one is the ordinance to amend Section 111 of the zoning ordinance to add terms related to energy storage facilities, to add the energy storage facility use into the industrial zoning districts. This was recommended for approval by staff and an 11-0 recommendation by the Planning Commission. And again, this item was deferred on the April 5th meeting for 30 days to provide for additional discussion or information. And Ms. Henley had requested information for this. Unfortunately, I believe that the person that was requested to speak did not, was not able to attend the Agricultural Advisory Commission to provide that information.
We're having a Zoom meeting Thursday.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Then I'll hand it over to Carolyn Smith to go through the rest of the planning items.
Good afternoon. Item two for the May 17th meeting is a request for a conditional use permit for an automated car wash with up to 12 vacuum stations. This site is very near the General Booth and Prosperity Road intersection. It's at that northeast corner. And this operation will share vehicular accesses along both General Booth and Prosperity Road with the Wawa Convenience Store that's on the parcel just to the south. City council approved a conditional use permit for an automobile service station on that property in 2019, and site work is underway for that development. The stormwater management will also be shared with the Wawa development within an off-site pond. And the proposed car wash building will be contemporary in design and will be set back more than 150 feet from General Booth Boulevard as there is a 100-foot-wide Dominion Energy easement that contains large transmission lines that parallel the right-of-way. Traffic signal improvements are planned and scheduled in 2027 with a V.Smart scale grant. Regardless, our traffic engineering experts have indicated that there should be no negative impacts associated with this use at this intersection. And there is no known opposition, and that was a consent agenda item for the Planning Commission. Item three is a request for a conditional use permit for- Oh, pardon me, excuse me.
I had to say the question. Do you want me to wait till the end?
Yeah, can we wait till the end?
Okay.
Item three is a request for a conditional use permit for car and truck rental for up to 25 vehicles on property located near the intersection of Holland Road and Lynn Haven Parkway. This site was a quick loan business, and also before that, it operated as a fast food restaurant. A truck washing canopy is proposed along the northern property line, and cars will be washed inside the rear of the existing building. Both these areas will be equipped with the required water recycling and filtering system. A significant buffer does exist along the rear property line. This buffer is primarily on city property as it is adjacent to a wide drainage area, but it really has served as a great buffer to those residents to the west and for those businesses that access their properties through Lynn Haven Parkway. Additional plantings along the right-of-way, excuse me, along the right-of-way, along the building's foundation, and then also within the parking lots are proposed. And this will bring the site more in line with today's current landscaping requirements. There was no known opposition on this application, and it was also a consent agenda item. Item four is a request for in-home daycare for up to 12 children within the applicant's single-family dwelling in the Lake Placid neighborhood. The applicant's rear yard is fenced, and we believe it provides ample area for children to play outside. A similar application for in-home daycare was approved in the vicinity, right around the corner, back in 2013 and has been operating without incident. There's no known opposition, and this was also a consent agenda item. Item five is a request for a conditional use permit for a home occupation, specifically a bakery in the applicant's attached garage in her single-family home in the Glenwood neighborhood. No customers or in-person transactions are proposed. No customers or in-person transactions are proposed, as the applicant intends to make deliveries of her baked goods to her customers. All renovations proposed are internal to the building, so from adjacent properties and from the right-of-way, it will be virtually undetectable. The applicant will be the sole operator of the kitchen. She doesn't contemplate to have any employees at this time. Recommended conditions include the prohibition of large truck deliveries, and she continues to work with our permits and inspection staff to ensure that her retrofits are in line with the building code as well as with Health Department regulations. And that was a consent agenda item as well. This applicant is requesting a modification of proffers to redevelop an out parcel in the Wesleyan Commons Shopping Center. This site was home to a former Sonic Drive-In and has proffers associated with a 1998 conditional rezoning when the shopping center was developed. Those proffers prohibit drive-through restaurants, and this applicant is requesting to redevelop the site with a Little Caesar's drive-through-only restaurant, so there'll be no indoor seating. The applicant will also be installing additional plant material, which will soften and screen the drive-through component, and the upgrades to the building's facade will make the exterior more harmonious with the exterior of that existing shopping center. There is no known opposition, and again, another consent agenda item. The applicant for item number seven is proposing to resubdivide two lots along 73rd Street that were legally created by deed in 1949. A single-family home has straddled the shared property lines since 1935. The applicant is requesting a subdivision variance to lot width for both lots, which will result in an equal redistribution of the frontage along 73rd Street. Under the current configuration, one parcel is just 30 feet wide, and the other parcel exists, which is a conforming lot, at 50 feet wide. With this resubdivision, each proposed lot will be 40 feet wide rather than the 50 feet that's minimally required. However, each parcel will exceed the minimum lot area standard of 5,000 square feet, as they will be 6,000 square feet in size. It appears that all other dimensional requirements can be met, and there will be no increase in density above what can be constructed as a matter of right, as the applicant is proposing one single-family dwelling on each lot, so that's two units in total. And technically speaking, the applicant could develop each of these lots with two units, either as a duplex or two single families under the North End Overlay. Practically speaking, we believe they could likely get three units, which would be duplex or those two single families on the 50-foot-wide lot, and then a single family on that smaller 30-foot lot. So technically, four units, but practically speaking, we think they could get three. The North End Civic League provided a letter and appeared in opposition to the application as they prefer the property to be developed by right and have concerns that this could cause some precedent setting. There were two speakers in support, and staff received 10 letters of support, many of whom live particularly on this block of 73rd Street. The supporters desire two side-by-side single-family dwellings, as proposed with this application, rather than the by-right possibility of more units in a different configuration. The Planning Commission did vote nine to zero to recommend approval, so this was one that they did hear. Item number eight is a request for a special exception for alternative compliance for a tattoo parlor in the Vibe Creative District. This use is not expressly listed in the Form-based Code, so they do need this special approval from the City Council. The structure was built in 1941, and it does have multiple tenants in it that will remain, including some retail, office, eating and drinking establishment, as well as an art gallery, and the applicant will occupy a 2,800-square-foot unit within this building. Parking is currently non-conforming, as cars actually back out into the right-of-way. The addition of this use will not rectify this arrangement, nor will it exacerbate this non-conforming situation. The applicant presented their proposal to the Vibe Creative District Board, as well as the Friends of the Creative District Board, and received a joint letter of support. There is no known opposition, and this was a consent agenda item. Item number nine is a request for a conditional use permit for a craft distillery at an entertainment venue at the oceanfront known as the Shack. It's between 7th and 9th Street, and then also between Atlantic and Pacific Avenues. The proposal includes the retrofit of an 1,800-square-foot area within a larger building that is adjacent to the public sidewalk along Atlantic Avenue. The distillery will operate on the property that has resort-oriented uses on it already, such as dining, entertainment, and recreational offerings. The applicant will be joint venturing with the Chesapeake Bay Distillery, which is an existing craft distillery at the oceanfront. While there is some parking on site, most guests will likely use bicycles or other modes of transportation, or perhaps even walk from their hotels to visit the distillery. There is no known opposition, and this was another consent agenda item. Items 10 and 11 are the first two of four short-term rentals, all at the oceanfront, of course. This one is an existing duplex at the northwest corner of Mediterranean Avenue and 22nd Street. This property is near the eastern terminus of I-264, and the surrounding area consists of a mixture of uses, such as single-family, multifamily, duplex dwellings, as well as some office, retail, and resort-oriented uses. The 3,000-square-foot duplex was built in 1955, and each of the units have three bedrooms, which requires a total of six parking spaces. All the parking can be easily accommodated on the property. According to Host Compliance, the duplex has not been used as a short-term rental, nor are the units currently advertised. There is no known opposition, and this was a consent agenda item for the Planning Commission. Item 12 is a request for a two-bedroom short-term rental. That was constructed in 2015, and there are nine other short-term rental duplexes within this condominium property, all of which exist under the grandfathering status and are current with their short-term rental zoning permits. The unit served as the applicant's primary residence during the initial grandfathering period, and now they would like to transition this unit to a short-term rental. There is one parking space located in the garage, and then a second space is leased right across the alley. The zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. According to Host Compliance, the unit has not been used as a short-term rental, nor is it currently advertised. There is no known opposition, and this, again, was a consent agenda item. And the final item is on your agenda due to a sorting error on staff's part just for this item of the property ownership data that we use when we send out our adjacent property owner notices. So once that was brought to our attention, we asked the City Council to defer this on April 5th to this May 11th public hearing. So you've been briefed on this before, so just very quickly, it's a one-bedroom short-term rental at the Oceans Two condominiums at the northern terminus of the boardwalk at 40th, excuse me, I'm sorry, at 40th and Pacific. According to city records, portions of this 42-unit condominium were constructed in the early 1950s, and parts of it were actually a small motel. Parking for these condominiums is actually off-site diagonally across the street and in front of the Holiday Inn. Each condominium is assigned one parking space, all within easy walking distance. The application is consistent with the nine other short-term rentals that have been approved within this condominium. Hotels and other short-term rentals are typical in this part of the oceanfront, particularly as this is immediately adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. Three letters of opposition have been received by staff, two of which are from the same person, who is also a short-term runner operator in the building, noting concerns about concentration of short-term rentals, safety, and then the perceived declining property values. According to the information provided by Host Compliance, this unit is not currently advertised, and the Planning Commission will rehear this on May 11th, the week before it comes back to you on May 17th. And that concludes...
Okay, any questions, Guy?
I think I've got the answer, but let me just make sure. On slide number six, item number two, Car Spa Inc., says District 6, formerly Beach. Looks to me like it's in District 5, and I think you've got it properly listed back on the main sheet.
Yes, sir. We've got it both ways in the slideshow. My apologies.
Sorry. This, and the one in Oceans 2, you have three letters in opposition, but two of the letters are from the same person?
Yes, sir.
So you have two persons or two in opposition. One of them just happened to have written two letters.
Yes, sir. And you will...
And one of them is a short-term rental owner himself or herself.
He has been through this process, yes.
And the other is a resident, but not a short-term.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else? All right, thanks upon, great job as usual, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, our Clerk of Court, Tina Sennon, will come and present the proposed budget for her department to City Council.
Tina, how are you?
Just fine. Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Dehaney, Mr. Stiles, good to see you. I don't know if this here?
Yes.
Are they gonna do it back there?
Sorry, Terry stepped out.
That's all right. Well, thank you for having me here this afternoon. Always quick, as my budget is probably, probably one of the simplest ones you do. The Circuit Court Clerk's Office is your court of record, and keeping the accurate records is very important. This one? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very important to all of us, and maybe not so much for all the people in this room today, but for those that come after us to view our history, where Mom and Dad or grandparents owned a house, searching for great-grandparents or other ancestors through our wills and estates that we've recorded, getting copies of Mom and Dad's or grandparents' marriage license from 40 years ago, helping an elderly family member secure a copy of their DD-214, because that is something we do for our military at no cost to them. Possibly, they recorded it with us years ago when they retired from the military, because a lot of times, it's a lot easier to get it from us than it is from the VA. We take great pride in performing all the duties so that we can be a place of great public service. The staff works very hard in these duties, because we know that at some point in time, we will impact almost every Virginia Beach citizen, and we always hope that the help is very impactful to them and that we've done what they needed to be done. We also have this entire court side with the filing of name changes, adoption, divorce, larger-sized civil suits, and of course, the criminal matters. And then everything, of course, that is appealed from the lower courts comes to the Circuit Court. We work very hard at assisting the seven judges of this court in dispensing justice accurately and as efficiently as we can, and that is just some of what your Circuit Court Clerk's Office does for you on a daily basis. So next. We have 57 full-time employees, and the total budget, as you see, is the $4 million. Like everyone else, we've had very much difficulty in hiring folks. We finally hired a couple of folks. We have a couple more to go, and we hope to have a full staff hopefully by summertime. From this chart, and I think this chart is something to see so that you know what we do with the money. You know, we're, for our locality as well as our state, you know, we're profitable for both, and I'd like you to see how we use those funds. From this chart, you can see that the majority of the budget that I receive, particularly from the state, is mostly made up of salaries for my folks. The much smaller piece of the chart gives us the dollar amount for our operations. So the second-largest jurisdiction in Virginia, taking care of 800-plus duties assigned by the Code of Virginia, plus all the cases that are appealed from the lower courts, this office operates itself on that $259,000 budget. That's a lot. That's a little bit of money for the lot that we do, and we're really proud of that, because we do take great pride in, I always tell the clerk in Fairfax, we call him Lord Fairfax, but we don't really count him as the first-largest jurisdiction. I always tell him Virginia Beach is the largest jurisdiction. But we're definitely a revenue producer, both the state and the locality, and that's important to note, that the budget that we use to do that is not very large. Again, you see the breakdown of our total budget. We are pretty frugal with our budget, and I typically do not ask for much. If I come to you, it's usually because I have a great need. We try not to be needy if we can help it. We are self-sustaining with the budget that we have, and we've been able to maneuver those dollars to still educate our folks, help the people that we need to help in Virginia Beach, and do all that without actually raising our budget, notwithstanding, of course, salary increases and fringe increases. Other than that, that are usually, our budget stays pretty much the same. We're very excited about two new initiatives that we are having this year with technology. Technology can be a wonderful thing. We are implementing a brand-new e-filing system for our civil and criminal side. I think the legal community is very happy to hear that. The Supreme Court does have one. It's not user-friendly, if you will. So we went looking, and there are several offices actually that are going to join in with Virginia Beach, Suffolk, York, Pecos, and Williamsburg, King George, Palatine, and Dinwiddie, with this new e-filing system. And we are putting it through some final testing right now, and hopefully, it'll be able to roll out, we're hoping, by the new fiscal year, by July 1. So that's a very exciting thing for the legal community. They've been wanting it for a while, but we never had anything to offer them, so now we do, and we believe that it will work very well for them. We're also implementing an online concealed handgun permit application. I know that it will streamline the process for both the applicant and for the Police Department and for my staff as well. At one time, we were doing, the COVID years, we were doing approximately around 1,000 to 1,200 a month, and that's a lot. That's a large number. Right now, it's come down. We're only doing about 850 a month, so it's still pretty large. The streamline will be that they will be able to do this online, give us their information. We will be able to expedite that to the Police Department to do the background check, and they will be able to expedite it back to us, and then we're running back and forth between buildings to get the concealed handgun permit or not, if the judge chooses that. But we're working out the final tweaks of that as well, and we hope to begin that program in June or July. So that, we're very excited about that. A lot of people have said that they were very excited to have that. So, in conclusion, not much to conclude. We're a pretty boring budget. I like it that way. Other than these new programs, helping the citizens of Virginia Beach and streamlining old paper processes for everyone, it comes at no cost to my locality. We have a technology trust fund that we use for the technology that we place in the office, and I don't spend that lightly. I like to know what the community needs, and I believe both of these pieces that we're adding are very much needed in our community. And as always, I thank you all very much for always listening and for helping my office when it was needed, and I would be remiss not to thank my budget person, Michael Evans and Katie. I know she's still here. She always helps me as well. It's truly been amazing to work with them, because they understand that constitutional officers are a little bit different, and I really appreciate all the help that they give me. So if you want to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, you didn't speak much about your wedding chapel, but that wedding chapel is some kind of nice, and if you could get Marriage Commissioner Manigo to dress up like Elvis, this might be a destination for weddings right here in Virginia Beach.
Might be. It might be. During COVID, you know, I searched around, because, of course, we closed the building for around six weeks, and so there are a lot of things you have to come to my office for. You have to come in person. So we thought, how are we going to do marriage licenses or concealed handgun permits? So I searched around, and we found an abandoned bank building right out here in Punggol's now Farmers Bank. Richard Holland was very gracious in letting us use it, and we, so we did a drive-through. It was a drive-through only. You could drive through and get your concealed handgun permit, your notary application, and actually get married. I personally married four couples in the drive-through. So I told myself I was going to put a picture of Elvis on the outside of that, of that window, and people would come up and had all kinds of comments. They go, something's wrong with this picture when the people inside the bank and outside the bank have masks on, and everybody seems to be happy about it, so. But we did it. It worked, and we used it for about a year, and I, I can't give kudos enough to Mr. Holland of Farmers Bank. He didn't charge us a dime, not one dime, to be in that building.
Get married and have a couple Big Macs for dinner right after full service.
It was, it was, it was a good place, and, and I, I've had a couple clerks that are building new complexes, and they asked me, what do you suggest? Because, you know, you, you've been through it, and we have, even though our building is about 28 years old now. I said, the first thing I would do is, is get a drive-through. I would have a drive-through. It keeps traffic out of the building that you don't need in the building. They can come right through, and it works perfectly well. But the chapel is a, a nice idea. I think we're the only ones in Hampton Roads that do that, so they, they get their marriage license, and they can walk right across the hallway and actually get married by one of the four commissioners, marriage commissioners in Virginia Beach. It works really well for the military community. A lot of them will have weddings planned, but they get deployed, so they want to make sure that their fiance is taken care of before they deploy. They will come over, get their license, and get married before they actually have their wedding. So it's worked out really, really nicely. Thanks, Rocky, for mentioning that.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Sabrina?
Hi, good afternoon. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You mentioned something in terms of staffing and trying to get back to full staff. Can you tell me and elaborate a little bit more in terms of the salary? What do you need help with in making sure you're fully staffed?
I've tried a couple of times, and, and we've, we've increased that salary by means of me adjusting my budget. When the last city manager was here, Mr. Hanson, I had done some figures in my head for a couple of years, and he actually let me show him those figures, and I, I needed about $20,000 to be able to accomplish giving my folks a swing, anywhere from about 2% to about 11% on the spectrum, depending on if their salary was at 25,000 or at 50,000. And, and people were coming into my office before as a, not a deputy clerk one, a microfilm technician one, because the salary was the lowest on the spectrum, 25.5, somewhere around that. And it, it wasn't enough to get anybody. I, I can't believe I've gotten some of the people I have gotten. So we, we rearranged it, and now no one came into my office at that time, is waiting for less than 30,000, because I thought that might at least entice some folks, you know? And so with the new law that the General Assembly just passed, no one now, a DC one cannot be hired under 32-193, but I'm still finding, we had two folks that we thought were really good folks. They, they'd had a great resume, and I called them to offer them a job, and they turned me down as soon as they heard the salary. They just both said it wasn't enough. And for the, when you have to know the laws of the Commonwealth, you have to know, my probate department, for example, I'll take that. I mean, we have attorneys that come in with them all the time, and, and most of them are probate attorneys, but some that are not, they will not know as much as my folks have to stay up on it every year when the General Assembly changes those laws. And so they have to know that. The folks at the counter, they have to know the civil law in order to take the concealed handgun permit application. They have to know what is actually being turned in, that it is correct. So 32-193, I'll still take it because it's a lot better than when I started 31 years ago, but it's, it's still not quite there, almost, but not quite there. But, but I have some great folks, I do, that do it day in and day out.
I think it's important. Thank you for sharing that. It's important, especially when we're looking across the board, to ensure that we are increasing salaries the way that they should be, and of course, as all of our folks here do, your department does a great job, an excellent job, and we have to make sure we're staying competitive, so.
And the city's been very gracious with including us, and I, I thank Mr. Duhany for that, including us in when they do give the city raises. We've been a part of that. There were years before, before I was actually clerk that we weren't getting, we weren't included, or that the state chose not to give us anything. I believe we went four years, only? Four years with 0%, no raise at all. So that four years is really hard to make up, you know, when 2% is your next raise. It's really hard to make up for those four years of nothing. But we're, we're, we're okay, and it'll increase, I believe, July 1. I think the state is calling for 5%. I wish it was a little bit more, but 5% we'll take, you know, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I hear you. That 32,000, that's still not there.
Still not quite there.
We're not there.
We're not there yet. Almost. We're there, almost there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Oh, I was just, I was gonna ask, the state raises of 5% coming through, is that, how many, does that affect all of your employees?
It's all constitutional officers, I believe, and they have to include that language in the law when they, when the General Assembly says all state employees, they have to put constitutional officers, because we don't, we don't fall, we're like this hybrid sometimes in the middle, unless they say constitutional, it doesn't apply at my office.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And thank you very much, Tina, and don't forget, the mayor is a certified justice of the peace too, if you ever get into a bench.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our Commissioner of Revenue, Phil Callum, will come and present the proposed budget for his department.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, council members, nice to see you. Okay, let's see if I'm qualified to operate this.
Need a mousepad?
How the new digs over there?
There were, um, should I tell you, since you're not there yet?
Yeah, tell them.
Give us something to look forward to.
Well, um, let me, it's not that I have a picture, but.
We're working on it, sorry.
Okay. They're, they are wonderful, and it's, um, it's bright, there's space. The building doesn't shut down every time somebody plugs in a space heater. We can have peripherals, or we can have lots of technology there that we were not able to support in this building. The plumbing works, that makes everybody happy. It's, it's really, uh, it's, it's a great space.
Can't wait to join you.
Yeah.
It's probably going to be broken in pretty well by the time y'all get there, but. Okay. So, um, thank you guys for the opportunity to be here today and report on this budget request and answer your questions. You can see the organizational structure at just under 65 FTEs, and the proposed budget just under 5.9 million. I'm gonna try to move through pretty quickly. These pie charts do describe things. I'm pretty sure you've been following these with most constitutional offices and departments. You can see the revenue in, revenue out. I'll be glad to come back to these as you guys see fit, but the, things are pretty clear, I think. You can see most of our costs in operations are 86% in personnel and 14% in, in other items such as software and the like. We are dealing with issues of discovery, assessment, audit, and the enforcement of state and local tax laws. We file, we deal with the assistance of applications for tax exemptions and, and certainly applications for business licenses and the like. You can see there's a small sliver there, excuse me, a small sliver there for our DMV select services, and those are projected commissions on those services. So the operating budget is, is proposed to grow at 6.89%, and specifically, more specifically than in the first point where I talked about the 14% of our budget, those are NADA subscription charges. These are, this is the outfit that provides the general assessment software for us to accomplish all the personal property assessments. Salesforce is another software that allows us to institute an appointment system and tracking system. Granicus is the software system that allows us to do tracking, discovery and tracking on short-term rentals throughout the city. RBS is our general data management system that, that's the big, the big cojuna there. Stamps, the tax stamps, you know, we issue state and local cigarette tax stamps, and then there's the equivalent of one full-time employee, which are two part-time equivalent employees. In that 6.8, that's 8.8, I had 8.9%. Major changes in calendar year 21, we, I think we all throughout the world have dealt with pandemic restrictions, and, you know, there have been times where they've been so onerous, and there have been other times where we, we found a silver lining, if you will, some way to do things better, faster, cheaper, and really expedite the instituting of, of certain things. One of those things is something I'm very happy to report on, and that is we, we have great growth in online transactions. That's from B-Pole, meals tax, lodging admission taxes. We've, we have over 10,000, almost 11,000 online transactions during calendar year 21. That's a huge improvement. It saves people from being in line, even though we have room in our new city hall, and it's a nice, bright place. We want to give them the option to, you know, pay your taxes in your pajamas. I mean, make it easy. Another point is online appointments through the pandemic protocols, which began in March of 2020, and it says here through December, but it was really through September, I think. There were about 8,600 appointments. Again, this allowed people to deal with us when our office never closed during the pandemic, but City Hall did close to the public in the spring and early summer of 2020. So we instituted an appointment system for when people did begin to come back in, and we certainly made for time for phone appointments and the like. It was, it was an awkward time that we all had to adjust to, but I'm glad to see that we were able to offer this alternative. The next thing is, excuse me, 14,649 online appeals for personal property taxes, and I, I think my pride shows through on that. I was the only commissioner in Virginia to offer drive-through tax appeals, the first to do it. We really did master it, and we evolved it to online appeals when COVID came about, because it was just not only going to be an impracticality, but it was going to be a health risk. So you can appeal your high mileage or condition of your automobile, it's personal property tax, online in Virginia Beach. Let's get to the next slide. So initiatives that are underway, the Personal Property Tax Relief or Exemption Program for Disabled Veterans. This, this was a constitutional amendment that was passed by the General Assembly, or that was cert, ratified by the General Assembly, exempting one vehicle for qualified disabled veterans. I want to also point out that Virginia Beach had already provided a reduced rate for one vehicle for qualified veterans. So when this particular law passed, you continued that, you as a governing body, continued that allowance for that lower rate for one qualified vehicle. So in fact, if you are a veteran, you can have one vehicle exempt and an additional vehicle with a lower rate. That's an exceptional benefit for veterans in Virginia Beach. State income tax tracking and security rewrite, along with the state income tax estimated and tax due tracking and security rewrite. These are issues where we're getting a more contemporary database to track the, the state income tax returns that come our way, as well as the estimated payments and tax dues that come our way. So we're working with COM IT on the first part, and we're working with COM IT and the Treasurer on the second part, as the Treasurer takes those payments and forwards them on to the state. Personal property tax reduction for elderly and disabled taxpayers, as well as the tangible business property suspension of tax for new taxpayers, are two issues that you folks passed and adopted in March, on March 15th of this year. The personal property relief will go to around 1,000 elderly and/or disabled taxpayers, save them about $160 a year, and I think that is a deserved and a, it'll be a well-received benefit. I'm sure that they will appreciate that, as well as the new business benefit will go to about 160, 175 new businesses, and it will align with the suspension of the business license tax on qualified new businesses in the city. So if you're a new business, come to Virginia Beach, you can qualify to be exempt from no business license tax, a, a minimal fee of $50, business license tax and business property tax for the first two years that you operate. That's a great incentive to come and try your hand at business if you're here and you want to start a new one. So I think that's another thing that you all can take pride in, in, in offering an environment for business here in Virginia Beach. The last point, I, you know, you beat me to the punch on it. I just, I want to thank you for making the decision to, to move us from a beautiful building that, quite frankly, you know, it had internal problems that needed a lot of work, and I'm sure that you're going to repurpose it for a great purpose for a couple of other city departments. It's a great space in the new building. I can tell you that, you know, taxpayers, they do come in, and they're like, what am I spending my money on? But the interactivity, when we're dealing with people, we have interview rooms, we have space for more privacy at the counter, there is, there's a general demeanor of civility there that I think is really great. It's, once they get past the awe, once they get past the, eh, how's it going to hit me? The bottom line is, I think that they really do appreciate the space, and I appreciate y'all's, you know, courage to go ahead and, and get it done. If you have any questions, I'm certainly here for you. Guy?
This is not a fair question for you, Phil, but I just, while I'm thinking about it, I thought I had sent an email to the city manager about this, but if I, if I didn't, I apologize. What are the, do you know what the limits are, the state law limits are on us granting tax relief in the areas that you cover to elderly and, and/or disabled citizens?
Commissioner, if you need, if you need to, I think you may be able to, Dana, do you notice? Yeah, come, I think, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's well prescribed in the law, but there's some, some ability for you to deal with that as a governing body.
So the state law provides the qualification pieces, so you have to be 65 years or older or of a disabled status, provided those are sort of the thresholds. Once you get that, then the state constitution was amended so that localities can set their own income and net worth limits. Presently, the net worth limit is $350,000, and then the income limit, there's two, there's one for our freeze program, which is higher than the one for the exemption, and then the exemption works as a partial exemption that has a graduation all the way up to a full exemption. That's actually in your budget because it adjusts every year based on the appreciation of the real property. So if you look in your budget, you'll see how that's getting adjusted for this year, the income. the income threshold.
Is that, and is that just personal property tax you're talking about now?
Sorry, I thought you meant the elderly disabled real, real property. The, the personal property program is prescribed, both the income and the net limit.
Okay, so that we don't have any discretion on the personal property?
The only discretion you really have on the personal property piece is the rate. And so the amendment recently to take it to a millionth of a cent is really as good as you can do on that program.
I got you. Okay, that, that, that's the main part I got for, for the commissioner.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Just a question on the, and maybe, still on, on the elderly, it was what I was going to ask later on, but this is a good time because you are administering the program. The, the, the mechanics of the program for the elderly housing exemption for real estate tax, the income limits automatically adjust each year with the budget. We, we took care of that.
There's an ordinance that is in your budget. You still have to adopt the ordinance, but it comes to you as a directive to the manager to bring forward that proposal to adjust those numbers based on the appreciation of the real property book.
Right. But what we haven't changed in a good long while, I think, is the, the total.
The, the net.
The net.
Yes.
And what is it, 350,000?
350, and it excludes the value of the home.
And that excluding the house, but we haven't changed that amount in, in forever, have we?
Correct.
I was, I know that it's come up that, you know, we might need to, is that something that we could adjust? I mean, like to 400,000?
You absolutely could. I believe the commissioner provided a memo to you guys four months ago about the number of applications that are actually exceed that net worth number, and it is a less than 1%, I believe. So it is not a regular occurrence that people have too much assets to qualify, but that is something you have discretion to adjust.
Well, I know that, you know, just in general, the net worth maybe, I mean, since we, I, I, I just don't remember we even have adjusted that. We have adjusted the other amounts, but the network, I think, has been the same for quite some time. We might want to look at whether we should make a, and maybe you can let us know, Phil, what seems to be the, if there is something, if that causes somebody not to be eligible, what are we looking at?
It would cause somebody to not be eligible. However, it, you know, what air tracking shows is that the current applicants, it's, it's not a large part of the universe. Now, there may be, and I'm sure that there are more people that populate the city and pay taxes on their real estate that, that may very well qualify at some level of this tax relief. And their net assets, other than the home, may exceed that. So I'll put to you this way, I'm, I'm doing as much outreach as I can to let people know about this benefit that the city governing body, the city council, has provided and budgeted for, and that I administer. But it, it, it just hasn't grown as much. The real area where it's grown is in, with benefits going to veterans. And many of those have been because of either constitutional amendment or acts by the general assembly. We have the largest concentration of veterans receiving benefits of any locality in Virginia.
But there's usually included in the tax bill, the parameters for the program, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And so, I mean, people are notified and that, you know, if they think they're eligible to come see you.
It is, and we, we, there's a lot of information on the back of the tax bill, and I'm very grateful to the city treasurer for allowing me to put things there. I kind of wish, I don't really want them to just, I don't want it to say, call me, but there's a point where I, I think there's so much, sometimes people stop reading. So we, we're trying to do as much outreach on top of that as possible. But you're exactly right, it's on the back of every tax bill, so.
Well, and it's important that people are willing to take advantage of it because it does save a lot of people a lot of money.
It does.
And, I mean, but if we want to just look at in reconciliation whether we need to adjust the net worth or not, but, but the other part does automatically adjust according to the rate adjustments, and that would happen with whatever we adopt. Is that correct? Okay.
At the same time you set your rates, yeah.
Anybody else, Guy?
Just one more question. Do either of you, or does anybody else, as you know, about in terms of comparative of our other localities in Hampton Roads, say, in terms of tax rates and the allowances that we're talking about here? I'm just trying to get some sense of where, where we are.
The last time we had the program analyzed, we were pretty, pretty substantially ahead of everybody else in the region, but you can pull that up pretty quickly.
That's, that's correct. Last time we looked at it, it was included in, the three-year review came out in the current year, so I can, I can dust that off and send it to city council as a, a refresh on that. And we do a comparison of Virginia Beach with other Hampton Roads localities and Hampton, Virginia Beach is, if not the general, if not the most generous, definitely towards the top.
I'd hear that, I would like to see that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
It is discretionary on the part of each locality, and, you know, we have been doing this, and I, you know, when we get these emails from people that say they're retired and they can't afford the tax increase and so forth, I just think, well, I hope you've applied, you know, for the, for the exemption because it's real. And it's, I, I'm, I don't think it's that hard to prove that whether or not you're eligible, so I hope people will take advantage of it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as previously mentioned, the real estate assessor was not able to attend, so we will not present his presentation. At this time, our city treasurer, Lee Henderson, will present on the treasurer's proposed budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of council. Thank you for having me today. I will try to be brief. If I can get the clicker to work. Here we go. So the city treasurer's office has 76.6 employees, one division, and an operating budget of just under $7 million. Just to note also, we have five outlying locations throughout the city to serve our citizens. In our budget right now, we have six vacancies. I know that's been a, a hot topic of conversation for all of the departments. Most of our vacancies are at our entry-level positions for those that are responsible for serving our citizens on our front lines. So we're, we're really trying to find employees to fill those positions and for them to be technology savvy. A lot of the operations in the treasurer's office have really been technology-driven, and we need that type of skill set for our employees. Our budget is composed of about 81% of salaries, which are the people that serve our citizens on a daily basis. About 10% of our budget is used for communications with our citizens, postage, paper, envelopes. We really try to send as many communications out as feasible and cost-benefit analysis there. And then about 9% of our budget is used for operating expenses, such as some of the IT subscriptions that the commissioner talked about for our technology initiatives, our supplies, our satellite location rent, and our bank fees. Our operating budget is increasing just over 8%. And an explanation of that is, part of it is the salaries. When I became the treasurer, many of our staff were at the very starting point of the salary range, which is very low in our office. The starting salary is around $31,000. So over the past few years that I've been treasurer, as those employees gain that experience, we like to progress them in their job position. So a little bit of that increase is just the progression of those employees. We have a new line item in our budget this year for banking fees. And what we have seen in working with the banks is because interest rates are so low, the, we used to be able to use compensating balances, which is excess money or additional money that we held in our bank account. Instead of earning interest on it, it would cover banking fees on that. Well, since interest, interest rates are so low right now, we don't have the funds to cover those fees, so we've had to create a new line item in our budget to cover some of those banking fees. We've also seen an increase in the cost of paper, envelopes, printing, the types of things that our citizens are also impacted as far as inflation, just in, in our economy right now. And another item that I'll cover a little bit later, if we have a small increase in rent, and I'll cover that on the last slide for one of our outlying locations. We have seen an issue lately, as multiple other departments have, in getting a supply of paper envelopes to do our mailings, but it has not yet impacted our ability to mail the tax bills out on time, but that is why we're seeing a little bit of the higher price as well. I added this slide in here just because I want everyone to know the interactions that the city treasurer's office has with our taxpayers and the methods of payment that we offer. We have processed 2.4 million payments from our five locations in the last cycle of the year. I've updated this number, but we have one, almost 1.2 million payments that come in by electronic means. So that's about 50% of our payments are coming in electronically, which is very exciting, and that is year-over-year increased. We process almost 18,000 of our payments over the phone. Where a taxpayer, if they have questions, they don't want to come in, and this increased a lot during the pandemic, they can call someone, and it's not an automated voice message system. It is they call and they speak with one of our employees on the line, they can answer questions, they can process the payment with a credit card or a debit card. We started that service several years ago, but it's grown exponentially. We handle over 144,000 calls in the last year, so we try to make sure that we're always available to our citizens in any means possible. And almost a million correspondences have been mailed, and that could be bills, delinquent notices, any type of communications that we track. Some of the things that are going on in our office, as Mr. Kellum spoke about, we are now located in the new city hall. It, it was quite the adjustment. We're still working our way around, but we want citizens to know that we are still available for in-person service, and that our mailing address, a lot of people mail us payments, the mailing address, 2401 Courthouse Drive, has not changed. So there is no change to what's printed on our tax bills or how they can get their payments to us. We are offering our fourth annual unclaimed property event through the Department of Treasury. It's being advertised in our tax bills that will go out next week. This is where citizens can contact the Department of Treasury's Unclaimed Property Division and try to locate funds that may have been quote-unquote "lost." It could be uncashed checks, dormant bank accounts of the like. And in the past years, it's been a very successful program. The first year, we were able to get back $226,000 to our citizens. The second year, 184,000. The third year, 94,000. So it feels really good for the treasurer's office to be able to help people find money instead of take their money for a change. Our Kempsville location is in, is going to be moving to a, another location. The Kempsville Shopping Center, where it is currently located, is scheduled for demolition very soon. I think we are one of two businesses that still remain in that wing of the shopping center. It is one of our busiest locations. I know that taxpayers really love the convenience of this shopping center. So we've tried very hard to find another location in the Kempsville area to serve our citizens. And we have signed a lease for an office in the Kempsville Crossing Shopping Center. It's at the corner of Kempsville Road and Centerville Turnpike. It is where there is a Walmart, Walmart grocery store in that shopping center, a McDonald's on the corner. We have signed the lease. We are in the process of doing a build-out right now, and I don't want to set a date for opening. When we have that date, we'll definitely communicate with council, do a, a news media release, and communicate with our citizens as well, but we're hoping for sometime in the summertime, July, August timeframe. Our office continues to work on all of our technology initiatives. We have had many legacy applications in our office that we are working to upgrade, change, enhance. And part of what I'd like to talk about today was previously talked about by Kevin Fairley with the IT department, but the treasurer's office has two CIPs under the IT initiatives that are very crucial to us. The first one is our real estate sustainment, revenue management sustainment system project. And that is in cooperation with the treasurer's office, the commissioner of the revenue, and the real estate assessor's office. So our community of interest holds a lot of the same software programs, and we work very closely together to make sure that we're able to do all of our jobs in the, in the correct way. We are asking for a little bit of money over the terms of the CIP to make sure that we are keeping up with the times, that the demands of the taxpayers for new technology initiatives, that we can, we can try to get to that position. Certain departments, myself and the other departments, may have little projects that are a part of that, but we want to make sure that we're able to serve the citizens the best that we can. Any automations that can be made are, are very important to us. My second CIP is strictly for the treasurer's office. It's our check processing system upgrade. So in the old building, and now the new building, we have our remittance processor, and we really held our breath and crossed our fingers and said prayers when we moved this piece of equipment from the old building to the new building. It is a 10-year-old piece of equipment. It's this long piece of hardware attached to a computer. It scans all of our checks and coupons, it makes our bank deposits for us. Without this piece of equipment, we cannot deposit to the bank, and that could be a million dollars today, that could be 20 million dollars a day. It is a very critical function that we do in our office. So we are asking for money to replace that 10-year-old system, and would love to have your support for that.
That's in the budget already?
It is proposed CIP, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? Barbara?
Thank you for having somebody at the end of the telephone. That's so important.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else? Hey, as always, great work to you and your crew.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time today.
You got it. Thank you for having me. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Virginia Beach's Health Director, Dr. Caitlin Fedati, will present on the public health's proposed budget.
Good afternoon.
Hello, it's wonderful to see you all. I know you have had a very packed and long couple of days, so I will try and be efficient with your time today, but thank you so much for having me. And I am Dr. Caitlin Fedati, for those of you who I haven't gotten to meet, so you're a new Health Department Director, and I'm here today with Mr. Paul Brahman, our Chief Operations Officer, who I'm sure many of you know, who continues to be an absolutely wonderful and critical resource for us at the Health Department. So before I jump in, I just wanted to let you all know, we are not requesting or suggesting any adjustments for our budget proposal for the Health Department from the city's budget this year. We did want to take the opportunity, though, to talk a little bit about some of the ongoing work and priorities, and then to highlight for you an area of funding that's been used traditionally for maternal health care that we'd still like to direct at Well Women Care, but in a slightly different way, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a moment here. So as you can see on our organizational summary, we've got a total of 6.38 FTEs, and those cover our different programs, including our Healthy Families Program, our dental clinic, our laboratory, our long-term support services for our seniors, as well as the maternal care that I mentioned. And one thing that you don't see on there, but that is a city program, you see it mentioned there at the bottom, is our baby care program. So this is a great example of the kind of community outreach work that we do at the Health Department, where we go out to families and help support them in non-healthcare or non-public health settings, bringing resources to them. And you don't see it mentioned in the budget because right now it is 100% funded through donations and grants, which is wonderful, but again, I highlight it here for you just as a great example of, of good work that I think is really important in public health that we'll want to be able to continue moving forward. So what you see here is our programmatic budget, and you can see the largest portion, of course, in red, is that portion of the local match funds that come from the city that meet up with our state match. So the state bringing that 55% and the city bringing that 45% for our annual local government agreement that makes up our cooperative budget for the Health Department. In addition to that, those other pieces of the pie are those other programs that I mentioned on the previous slide, and so you can see the total here of city funds. And in a non-COVID year, this total city funding would probably represent about 35... And in a non-COVID year, this total city funding would probably represent about 35-36% of our typical operating budget. And that's because, in addition to the state cooperative funds, we also have some other state and federal funds and grants. So what you're looking at here is the summary of our department operating budget with city funds, and you can see those programs that I mentioned there listed. And again, to be clear, we're not requesting any differences in our city funding this year. However, you do see some differences in those changes on the far right-hand side. So the places where you see those negative percentages are actually the result of adjustments that we made at the request of the city related to some reduction in charges around risk management. The increase for those three middle programs is associated with increased costs during the COVID response. So these were things like laboratory supplies, support, things like PPE, cleaning supplies, to allow us to continue those programs safely. And that work was actually funded in part due to funds that were returned to us from our city budget the prior year, so given back as revenue. We don't expect that those costs will continue for the coming year. So essentially, what you wind up with is a net of the same requirement that we put forth previously. I did want to talk just a little bit about some of the ongoing initiatives and work that we're doing at the Health Department, things that many of you might already be familiar with. And I thought I would start by just recognizing that includes now having a dedicated Health Department Director here in Virginia Beach. And I can affirm what you all already well know, that there is plenty of work and a big need here for the city to have its own Health Department Director. So I am very glad to be here with you all. I would also share that we've been able to bring on, at the same time I started, a wonderful physician supervising our clinic by the name of Dr. Flood, an OB-GYN, who's been in practice here in Virginia Beach for many years, who some of you might know, who's really been key in supporting a lot of our operations and bringing us back to supporting our community coming off of the COVID response. So she's been a great asset for us. We've also been able to expand our leadership team and fill some key vacancies, including our Environmental Health Manager. We were able to bring an individual by the name of Mr. Rob Robinson over from Texas, although he is a Portsmouth native, and I can tell you that, like me, he is very happy to be back in his home state of Virginia, supporting you all in Virginia Beach, so we're excited to have him. And then we've also been able to bring on, and many of you might be familiar with this, a really unique and interesting funding opportunity that we received from CDC. And this was actually just prior to my arrival. So the City of Virginia Beach Health Department qualified for about a $3.3 million grant from CDC to focus on health equity, inclusion, and diversity. And we qualified for this because of the size of our population and also the distribution of our population, so a little bit rural and a little bit urban. And it represents a really great opportunity, and in fact, we've been able to bring on a talented individual by the name of Kate Meakin, who's been leading those efforts. And I'll give you just a very quick example of some of what we're starting to do around this body of work. So we were looking at ways that we can bring key services to the community and make it easier for people, especially around things like COVID vaccine. We were able to work with our Medicaid partners to identify a neighborhood where there were low vaccine rates. And what we did was work with that neighborhood to actually go out on site, bring vaccine, bring health screenings, bring some key area partners, people like fire and rescue, and also some of our human services colleagues, and come together to help support that community. So we did that at the Coastline Apartments about a week ago. It was a big success. We were really happy to be able to do it, got about 40 more people vaccinated, and helped connect people to some really important resources. And I share that as an example of the kind of work that I think is going to increasingly be really important for public health to focus on, and it's the kind of thing that I think we'll want to be supporting moving forward, even after this grant ends. So I can tell you that me and my leadership team will be working on ways and ideas for you to consider in the future about how we can make that happen, even after these grant funds go away. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Well Women Care as well, and mention that funding that I initially talked about around maternal care. So in years prior, the city has provided about $70,000 that's been directed for the care of women's health. And in years prior, that was used to help pay for the medical care of prenatal, women who needed prenatal care who weren't otherwise insured. And what we've seen over the years is that because of increased access to insurance, that need has actually gone down. And in fact, the program went down to only caring for about eight patients last year, and our last patient delivered in November. On top of that, we also had providers who were no longer able to sort of accept patients that way with regard to COVID protocols and some of the processing of patient populations. And so when myself and Dr. Flood and others came on board, we had a discussion about, well, what do we think the true need is for our community, and how can we best direct those dollars? And so we really wanted to focus on addressing the well care of women in Virginia Beach, even before they get pregnant, right? So recognizing that the outcomes for a healthy pregnant woman, a healthy mom, a healthy baby, really have to do with, you know, helping set somebody up with a healthy life even before that you think about getting pregnant, right? So really taking that idea of primary prevention in public health and applying it to a problem like this. Now, in addition to that context that I've just provided for you, we very recently just found out that the Health Department is going to be experiencing a significant reduction in our Title X funds from the State Health Department. So Title X, that Family Health Programming Block Grant at the federal level that provides support for women's health care and contraceptives, actually experienced an increase in applications in the past year, and as a result, the Virginia State Health Department experienced a decrease in their typical allotment. And so our Title X budget has been decreased by approximately 90%, which is going to effectively end that program for us. So that, in conjunction with recognizing that there's probably a better way for us to support Well Women Care here in Virginia Beach, is why we'd like to take that 70,000 and refocus it on continuing to provide those visits for women, so still seeing our patients who have been seeking women's health care, working to support them in our community, and then adding to that a component of increased community outreach, so similar to the event at Coastline that I mentioned, where we really start to work proactively to bring resources to the community and make it easier for people to get the right connections and the care that they need. So that brings me sort of just to some big-picture conclusions. I would be remiss, of course, if I didn't mention, you know, COVID-19, right, and the response and recovery that we've all been working on for several years now. And as incredibly challenging as I know that has been for everybody, I would also highlight how it's brought some really great resources to Virginia Beach that I think we can really take advantage of and really improve the way that public health serves the city. And in particular, I'm really excited for us to start to look at ways that public health can serve as that connector for people to care, but also to resources and information. So taking that model of what we did for COVID and really applying it to all of the public health needs for the city. And that's going to include, of course, a heavy focus on things like communication and outreach, as I've mentioned before. And that's how I really see the future of public health evolving here. So that is it for me, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions at all? Sabrina?
I don't have a question, but just have a comment. Thank you so much for sharing today. Very informative. I really, I know that you are, and a lot of the staff are coming in new, but just the overall, your overall focus and perspective on the community, definitely in the right place. I appreciate all that you're doing. Certainly let me know if there's any way I can be of a help or assistance in some of these initiatives that you're bringing forward, especially the women's wellness program. Certainly would like to be of assistance.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, and I absolutely am sure you'll be hearing from us. I think in particular, we recognize how important it is for public health to be communicating effectively with our leaders, with the people that we serve, and so I really appreciate that, and we absolutely will be following up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say how fortunately, I said it before, how fortunate we are to have you. This physician is highly qualified, and we're just really lucky to have you and to have our own again. So we're very, very grateful, and I know you're working very closely with the Health Service Advisory Board, because I hear from them. And you've got some ideas of making yourselves better known than the community and doing some good things. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here.
Anybody else? That was great. And the other thing, I'd like to have a conversation with you, is, you know, we're really getting an idea commissioned up, inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, and we had a couple of focus group meetings with a broad spectrum of the community. And health, especially mental health, was, you know, determined as a priority. And so, you know, it goes with diversity, inclusion, but also accessibility. So if you don't mind, especially with your grant writer, which might be very helpful, but, you know, health was identified as one of the main areas that, you know, we really, really want to, you know, confront in the city of Virginia Beach. I'd welcome the opportunity to sit there and have a Starbucks with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, thank you very much.
If it would be all right, Dana wanted to clarify a prior answer.
Okay.
So I think I answered the question asked, but not the real question. So personal property tax relief for elderly and disabled, those are prescribed by statute. We are not at the cap of the statute, if that was your question. So there is additional income and additional net worth that we could change in our existing personal property levy to match the cap that is permitted in the state code.
So there is a cap?
There is a cap in the state code. We are just not at the cap.
Could you provide that information?
I will.
Thank you.
Mark, thanks for the clarification. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Director Kirschman from Parks and Rec will give an update on the proposed budget for his department.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Mayor Juhanyi, it's my pleasure to be here today to talk about the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year '23 Operating Budget Proposal. I know we're in a quick timeframe, so I'm going to jump right into it. Got about four slides for you before we dive into the capital budget. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I think half my staff is here with me behind me, but Debbie West is our budget manager. Debbie, say hi. We stole her from Public Works earlier this year. Administrators Frank and Chad are here. Deputy Director Shirley Dibler. And we also are graced with two of our volunteers, Walter Camp with Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Council, and Hugh Tierney with the Park Recreation Commission. I'm happy that they were able to make it today. So again, without further ado, let's dive right into it. Really quick, just to recap of what Park and Recreation does, and this is a 30,000-foot view, but I really put it into four big buckets. Of course, we are responsible for managing and maintaining all the city parks. That is over 290 parks, over 7,000 acres, and all of the amenities within them, all the ballfields, playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, canoe-kayak launches, dog parks, skate parks, you name it. It's the Japanese gardens at Red Wing, it's Luton Haven Marina, it's Little Island Park, it's the Princess Santa Athletic Complex, it's the playgrounds on the beaches at the oceanfront in Gromman Island, all those things we manage to maintain. Of course, everybody is well familiar with our seven recreation centers, what I would say the pride of Virginia Beach, and really an unparalleled recreation center system across the country. That includes all of the associated programming that goes with those centers inside the building. We are also the largest childcare provider in the city, pre-COVID, serving 3,000 children per day, offering before-and-after-school childcare in every elementary school, all 56 schools throughout the year, four licensed early childhood centers and our rec centers, as well as numerous summer camps that provide childcare throughout the summer. And we realized how important childcare was when COVID hit. That was a major, major topic and a major concern for many people as we shut down and the schools shut down. And then, of course, the Parks and Landscape Services Division maintains not just city parks, but all city properties across the entire city. That's every pump house, fire station, police station, the aquarium, anything growing green at the oceanfront, every roadway median, any municipal center here, everything that's city-owned and green and growing, we maintain. That's not just parks, any city property. So that, in a nutshell, is everything we do at Parks and Recreation every day, not to mention special events, therapeutic recreation and inclusion services for children and adults with special needs, athletics, every shelter rental, every special event, every park permit, every boat launch is all through us. So it's busy. It's very busy. What I've done for our budget for this purpose is I've kind of taken it out of the budget book, and first of all, let me tell you where our money comes from. We're a very unique Park and Recreation system, at least in my experience across this country. We have a variety of dedicated sources, as well as the general fund, as well as our earned revenue. So as you can see in this chart, this is where our money comes from. Roughly little over 14 million for next year is going to come from fees and charges, things that people pay for, childcare, rec center memberships, summer camp, to rent a shelter, you name it. Then we have the dedicated real estate tax. That's what we call the special fund for Parks and Recreation, the dedicated fund that comes to us. We have general fund transfers. We have the general fund for Parks and Landscape Services, which includes the roughly $5 million that comes from the school system to maintain their properties, and then a bunch of other little slivers here and there. We get a little bit from the tip fund, a little bit from the Town Center Service Fund, a little bit from the beautification fund, very little bit from the gift fund, and they all come together to make the Park and Recreation budget. So that's where it comes from. Where it goes is here. So you can see roughly 27% of our budget goes, the big group is called the rec centers, 12% goes to childcare or out-of-school time, 2% to sports management or athletics, 33% to Parks and Landscape Services, that includes the school properties and all city properties. And then you can see the smaller pieces of the pie there, administration, special events, planning and design, and then the other funds, which the other funds really don't go through direct services, but we have to pay for them. So that's where the money's going to. So that boils it down into where the money comes from, where it goes to. I also wanted to focus on that earned revenue bucket of 14 million that you saw earlier. That's really the one area where I say we don't have control over. We can't control how many people are going to come to us, but we have influence over in terms of, we have a very laser-focused marketing team that's been working very hard for the past two years to get our revenues back to pre-COVID. So we've had countless marketing campaigns. They've been very strong. But just for the council's knowledge, when you look at the department's revenues, the two big chunks are childcare and rec center memberships. Everything else is very minor to that, athletics, park permits, and other like donations and cell tower revenue. So those are the two big buckets, childcare and rec center memberships. Unfortunately, the other two have been doing great during COVID. Athletics is on fire. I mean, I was at the PacLacs weekend, and my daughter played in a softball tournament there, just rocking every field in use. Every picnic shelter's been rented every weekend through COVID, so park permitting is on fire. But those are two of our smallest revenue sources compared to childcare and rec center memberships. So again, that's our earned revenue and where it comes from. If you want to see all that information in a different way, that's how the budget book has it. I like the first two ways, just shows a little cleaner in terms of where it comes from, where it goes, but that's how you'll see it. And if you have any questions, let me know, and Kevin is in the audience as well. But it's the same numbers, just divided up in terms of where it comes from and where it goes. So where are we at going to next year? As you can imagine, COVID just crushed our revenues, our earned revenues. So that pre-COVID, we were bringing in just shy of $17 million per year in earned revenue, fees for charges. That was the peak. As far as I know, as far as I went back, that's the most we're ever making in this department. COVID hit in fiscal year '20, and you can see it dropped from 16.9 million down to 9.5 million. It was one quarter, one quarter. Remember when it hit in March? So that fourth quarter, boom, everything shut down. We had no money coming in for summer camps coming up. Then the next year, we dropped to 6.4 million. Now, if you recall, the way we balanced our budget those two years was through our fund balance. So we tapped the park rec fund balance to balance our budget and to make up for these losses, and that's why the fund balance has declined significantly over the past two years. Now, I will tell you, this year, we plan on ending this year at 11.7 million. We're pretty much right on target to do that, again, through very focused and very robust marketing efforts. And we anticipate next year that the growth will continue to rebound. Next year, we are budgeting $14.1 million in revenue. What that means is we're not back to pre-COVID revenues until the year after next, most likely. That being said, we've also had some budget cuts over the past couple of years, and so we're down 19 positions from where we were three years ago. And when you combine being down a number of positions, but not only that, having a hard time to fill the positions you do have, you have decreased levels of services, and that's where we are at right now, as we all know. We were, thanks to council, a Uh, we were, uh, thanks to council, able to boost pay for the childcare positions. Those have rebounded. It's our intent to have all childcare positions and all school sites and rec center sites back open by the fall. We have stabilized that staffing. Uh, but as you know, we're down in lifeguards. C-TAC pole is closed three nights a week. Rec center operations are not back to pre-COVID hours of operation. We just don't have the staff. Uh, sports management, athletics is just crushed. Uh, they're down about 80% in part-time staff. So that's our biggest challenge right now, and so we have these decreased levels of services, uh, just based on our staffing, uh, capacities. That being the case, going into this year was a, it was a budget season unlike any other for my staff. Uh, I told them, "Don't ask. No new positions, no new initiatives, no new nothing. We are asking for nothing new from the city, except for two things. One is, we always ask for a little bit of money to maintain any new properties coming online. So in the Parks and Landscape Services area, we, we have, uh, some new properties coming online. We, we contract some of those out. We've got to have money to pay to either maintain it ourselves or to contract it out. So there is requests in there that's in the city manager's budget, um, to maintain those new properties. Everything else of our request is asking for money to boost the pay for our positions, so that we can get staff back in line. Oh, that is 100% really of our request. Um, again, uh, for the second year in a row, we also will not, this will, uh, you'll hear this in Chad's presentation. We will not be transferring the typical $1 million. How it works is at the end of every year, when the year is over, we've lapped salaries left over, we transfer a million dollars in the rec center CIP. We didn't do it last year. We're not going to do it next year. That means maintenance of our rec centers is just declining and, and kind of the cans getting kicked down the road on those items. So, uh, really where we are now is really, we've been doing a lot of these things already. Like I said, marketing's been on fire right now, really aimed at both, uh, revenue recovery, um, general awareness and getting people to the doors of our rec centers and our childcare, um, as well as really, uh, focusing on hiring initiatives for our positions. Um, as I said earlier, we hope to have all childcare positions, um, open by the fall, and we've made that promise to all the parents uh, from all the school sites that are still consolidated, um, or were threatened to be closed earlier in the year. And we hope to, we would like to get back to pre-COVID, pre-pandemic levels of operation. Have the hours of the rec centers back open, uh, to where they should be, and the pole hours back open to where they should be. That will help us stabilize our revenues, because people, you know, not everybody, people want to come late in the evenings? Well, right now they can't, so they end up not renewing a membership or coming back because they work till seven or eight, can't get there, and the rec center's not open as, as long as it used to be. Um, so that is all dependent upon being able to fill positions. We have the positions. Again, we're just struggling filling, especially the part-time positions. So again, like I said, uh, we have, um, requested money for over and above, um, minimum wage, uh, for our part-time positions. I, I think if we're only going to pay $11, that's what we're paying now, in 12 hours next January 1st, if we're going to pay their required minimum wage of the state and not go above that, we're in trouble. We didn't, we paid above minimum wage before the pandemic. I don't think we can come out of the pandemic and just pay minimum wage. Uh, or we're going to continue to have significant reductions in services. Um, and so with that, I'll open it up, uh, for any questions. It's a pretty straightforward budget. No new initiatives, no new positions, uh, just money, money to pay the staff.
Any questions for our fantastic Director, uh,
Thank you.
Sabrina?
No. No, well, actually, um, it would be a question. Um, thank you for sharing today. I, I know that I've been at the meetings and I know how difficult and how essential it is to make sure we provide in our budget the money you need for those salaries, uh, to make sure you're fully staffed, because it is impacting some essential services, especially when you can't open facilities, you know, like the C-TAC rec center, can't open some of those facilities every day. You're down in lifeguards and, and so many other key areas, even the concerns with, um, uh, some of our youth sports programs.
Uh, you've saw, you've, you saw the email as well, I know, yes.
Don't have the staff to accommodate some of these key programs. But I'm, I just want you to kind of elaborate on the salary that we really need to be competitive, to get those folks, uh, employed on your staff, more than minimum wage, uh, more than $11.
Sure.
What, what's going to be competitive for you?
Sure. I, I am not an HR or a competent class person, so I'm, I'm, you know, this, this is off the cuff, you know, so take this, please, with a grain of salt. I would say that when we, uh, moved our childcare positions, starting at $15 and some made 18, so we have three levels. We have an assistant leader and, and anyways, three levels in childcare from 15 to 1850 in that range, we were able to fill the positions. We got 100 applications in two weeks and, and started getting people in the door. Um, so I don't know what the right number is, um, but anything less than 15, I think we're in trouble. I always look around when I'm driving around and I, and I see the Wendy's and the Amazons and the Walmart. I always tell, uh, staff, you know, we're competing with, with Hobby Lobby. Hobby Lobby is paying 1650 an hour to be a front cashier in the front, and they guarantee you every Sunday off. I can't guarantee you, I'm going to work you every Sunday. Weekends are busy time. They're the tournaments, they're the athletics, they're the things going on. And so I'm going to work you hard, I'm going to work you every weekend, or would you rather make more money in an air-conditioned place and be guaranteed the weekends off? And so that's the competition we're facing between fast food, um, retail, uh, positions, um, you know, you name it. So it's, it's very competitive out there, and we're definitely having a hard time. But I would say, you know, 15 out of 10.
And I, I appreciate, um, that information, and I would say at least 15 too. I would confirm that as well. Um, so thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
Um, I also want to just say really quickly, when I was at the last meeting, I was really impressed by the mayor's youth action committee and the report that was given. Not only was it informative, but it really showed how the staff used the money. And then the money was requested by Councilmember Rouse in the last budget, um, to help those programs in the summer youth programs.
Yes.
And boy, have they done a marvelous job with using that money to really impact the community, uh, events. I know one, uh, area in particular there, I think it's Williams Farms, the rec center. Uh, there's like a studio where children can come and they can do, uh, make beats, music, different things, and I was
Full studio, making hardcore videos, it's high-end equipment, yes.
I was so impressed about the way the money is being used. So, um, it just makes me understand and just highlight the funding that we are appropriating to these programs, to our Parks and Rec. It's being used in a very, um, responsible, uh, way, and also in a way that is enriching the lives of the residents. So, uh, thank you for the, your presentation. Thank you for your staff and the volunteers who are here. Um, I, I know you are a huge advocate for the programming that we're doing, and, uh, I hope that, and I believe that we can, I hope that we can do all that we can to meet those, those needed, uh, the funding that you need to get your staff, to increase it, and to make sure we have those essential programs that we need for citizens who pay for those services.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Hey, Aaron. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Director Kirschman. Um, first of all, it's, uh, I think we're very fortunate to have you. Um, just your vision you have for our Parks and Recs, um, has really, really, um, taken us to the next level. And I think that is shown with some of the, the rewards you received over the years. Um, obviously, we had a, a brief conversation, um, in the hallway, and, and I just want to, you know, get with you and work with you on really looking at, uh, having an honest assessment of our rec centers as, um, a, a whole and holistically. I'm, I'm sure we're aware of, and we've heard last budget hearing, um, about C-TAC and its rec centers, uh, as well, and, and some of the other aging rec centers throughout our, our city. So at some point, I'd like for us to get together and, and really get to understand holistically, what are the assets of our entire rec center, um, fleet, so to speak?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and particularly those ones who are, I, I know C-TAC is one, B-Side, Great Neck. The ones that are, are, are seemingly running on, on fumes, quote-unquote, fumes, on his li- last leg. And so, um, if we could do that, I think that would really go a long way in helping us understand, um, the, the order of things and, and where we can get to try to, um, get to helping and, and utilizing, um, the assets that we have. So, um, I'm not sure if you, you have any thoughts on that?
I would welcome the opportunity and happy to. We can set that up. Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Just, just real quick, this, this is not for you, Mr. Kirschman, but the follow-up on Councilmember Rouse. Um, and, and just reading, um, the email from President Rice and the concerns for the C-TAC Community Recreational Center. Um, I, I listened to the concerns of the, the residents, and, you know, I think we also need to have an honest conversation amongst this body, uh, because they want to be prioritized, and they specifically are saying prioritize us in the budget. We have needs, as you know, and the issue is, and, and one of equity. And so I, I've had a conversation about the budget and making sure they're a priority. And so I think it should not just be on one member, you know, to do it, or one or two, but it, it should be important for all of us. So this body needs to have a serious conversation about how we're going to prioritize, um, the C-TAC rec center, uh, especially in terms of equity. Uh, and I have had a conversation where, you know, in so many words, I was told to kind of find those resources. I think we all need to work together to find those resources, because this is, we're a team here, and so we all have to make this a priority. So that's not for you, for this body. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Barbara?
Um, not everybody has rec centers like we have. Uh, would you please give us an accounting of what a rec center costs to build?
Mm-hmm.
And then what it costs to operate?
So I would say in
Uh, you don't have to do it now.
The market's a little bad, but I would say in general, Chad, depending on cost per square foot, 250 to 300? 300 bucks a square foot. So the bigger you go. So 100,000 square foot building is going to be 30 million men.
30 million.
Uh, men, and I would say that's, go up from there with our stormwater requirements these days. Uh, cost to operate, again, based on your cost recovery. So the programs you're running, um, aquatic facilities can bring in a little more money. They're a little more exciting and can, can grow memberships. But I would say in general, we see it, our rec centers here, operating costs, that includes everything, utilities, uh, building, we, we send some money to building maintenance, because they have some staff that serve our buildings. 5 million to operate, you might have about a $3 million recovery, so 2 million, one and a half to $2 million net hit to the budget. Depending on the size, though, and the amenities within the rec center.
Well, I know that what we did before with rec centers was we had a bond referendum for rec centers. And I think, you know, that's, it's really discretionary, and I, I think looking back to, to what we have done in the past would be what we would need to do. I'm, I'm kind of thinking that bond referendums have usually been the way that, and I'm looking at Linwood, uh, Louis left. What, what have we, we had a bond referendum in the late 80s on rec, on, on referen- bond referendums, and I, and I think then that money continued to, we, we, we have some ongoing funding from something. It's historical. Look it up. Don't, don't try to tell me now, because we're running out of time. But if that can be a question that you all can answer for me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
What's our, how have we built bond ra- uh, bond ra- I mean, the recreation centers and, and
And funded the operation.
What is our historical, uh, way of doing it?
Sure. We have some of that.
Linwood?
Well, Michael, I know in a previous presentation you, uh, noted the, um, backlog on playgrounds also. And I don't know if the next briefing is going to address that.
It will.
Okay. I'll wait for that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Passing the baton.
Good question.
All right. Great presentation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One last thing, um, just, uh, a, a quick note while we have Mr. Camp, um, here, um, as well. Mr. Camp, can you, you come up here? I, I just want to take the time to, um, acknowledge, uh, Mr. Camp. He was, uh, awarded, uh, a volunteer, um, award this past, last Tuesday, along with myself, for his great work that he does. Um, not only just going about our bikes and trails ways, serving on that, but cleaning our waterways. And one of the, the funnest stories I, I've heard, he would get his kayak out there in our, our freshwaterways and get tons of trash and, and, and clean our waterways out, and that of numerous hours as well. And so I just, if you have a couple of words, um, I, I, I think this time's the time, we really want to acknowledge the volunteer. It's, this, he doesn't get paid to do that. So one who truly cares about our community, um, and takes the time out of his, his life to go out there and do that. And so I just want to publicly acknowledge you, Mr. Camp, um, and, and, and say thank you as well, and if you have any couple of words.
Well, thank you. This is most unexpected. I came to support our department, not for myself. But it was an honor to sit next to Mr. Spoor, sit next to you, sit next to the other honorees. It, it's an honor to be here in this city. I chose to come here, and I thought it was a place where I could make a difference. 900 hours of volunteerings for the city last year, I guess, there's that opportunity. Hopefully, some of it made a difference. But it is an honor. And participating in our government, as you've called me up to do right now to say a few words, that's an honor too. You don't get to do that in every city, where you really engage with your elected officials, with your talented staff professionals, to try to make our community a better place. So thank you for the call-out, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick Gaver.
Thank you.
Takes a lot of people to run a city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next presentation will be the Parks and Recreation Proposed CIP, provided to you by Chad Morris.
Howdy.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhaney. Chad Morris of Parks and Recreation Planning, Design and Development Administrator. I'm, uh, thankful for the opportunity to speak with you today and also to present the FY23 CIP for the department. Uh, overview and agenda that I'll speak about today is, uh, very similar to what other CIP section managers have presented. So I will jump right on into the, uh, pie chart with the summary, uh, of the FY23 CIP. And this slide, uh, puts, puts our FY23 dollars into four buckets. The largest portion shown on the chart is nearly 4 and a half million dollars, or 53%, um, which is proposed for the capital repairs and renovations of our infrastructure. Uh, this, of course, is the department's highest need and the priorities, uh, to dr- address the large capital replacement backlog within the park system. Uh, the next component of the CIP is the newly reinstated open space acquisition program. At 2 and a half million dollars per year, reflecting 30% of the CIP for FY23, and nearly a million dollars, or 11% for special use and contractual obligations, which goes to our golf courses or sport, or sportsplex and other facilities where we have a contract obligation. And finally, $475,000 or 6% of, uh, for new development, which is specifically for bikeways and trails implementation. Uh, of, one note you'll see on here that, uh, in FY23, the budget, FCIP proposes no funding for recreation center repairs and for new park development. We have, uh, 19 projects or programs listed with, uh, no change. Uh, these are listed on the next three slides. Uh, projects include improvements to park ballfields, tennis courts, basketball courts, and waterway access sites. Uh, the bikeways and trails projects that are continuing to, they're in, are in the design process are Foxfire Trail, Three Oaks Trail, Violet Bank Trail, and Athalia Creek Greenway Phase 3. Uh, we also have those contractual obligations for city-owned golf courses and, uh, partial funding in out years for design of Centerville Rec Center in FY24 and 25, but does have a $32 million balance to complete. Next are seven projects, uh, listed here that will replace, uh, three neighborhood playgrounds, provide improvements to Mountain Point Park, uh, continue the next phases of structural repairs at the sportsplex, uh, and renovate high school tennis courts uh, in partnership with the City of Virginia Beach Public Schools. And this last slide with projects with no change, um, I definitely, uh, want to share our appreciation with, uh, of city council's approval to direct 17.2 million dollars in ARPA funds, uh, to, to the department. Most of this funding will be used to address the 40% or the nearly $30 million backlog in declining Parks and Recreation infrastructure. In addition, $13 million in ARPA funds were directed to Public Works, uh, for Parks and Recreation facilities, including relocation of the Parks and Landscape Services Lynnhaven Life Cycle Maintenance Yard and upgrading HVA systems at six out of the seven recreation centers. We do have, uh, the Park and Recreation CIP has two projects with modifications. Uh, Community Recreation Center Repairs and Renovations and the Open Space Acquisition CIP. The modification for the Community Recreation Center CI, uh, Renovations CIP, um, is, the modification is that for FY23, the program will not receive any funding. Uh, Michael mentioned this earlier, uh, those Those funding sources that usually transfer money over to the CIP to take care of the large capital maintenance, things that are needed at the facility, is Great Neck, Bayside, Princess Anne and Sea-Tac Recreation Centers and even Williams Farm is needing some repairs. As these facilities continue to age, we're experiencing more and more frequent failures of mechanical and electrical systems, pool pumps, chillers and roof leaks. For the next couple of years, only the most pressing urgent repairs will be made using what we have available in the CIP balance. The replacement of cardio and weight equipment may have to be delayed on its typical rotation and potentially creating customer dissatisfaction. The CIP has been modified or more accurately been retitled to Open Space Acquisition and it was the former Open Space Development and Maintenance Project. This project will only be used for the acquisition of open space properties, more acquisition-related type activities. Starting in FY twenty-three, the proposed CIP will include two and a half million dollars a year reinstated for acquisition. Also, a couple of the lists on the chart here references a few of the past open space purchases, specifically ones that have not been developed or quite open to the public or unfunded to be developed. Though there is great benefit and this amazing opportunity and this amazing program can provide with preservation of the tree canopy as used as conservation or as flood mitigation. At some point in time, will need eventually be considered an opportunity for funding to provide at least the basic infrastructure for passive recreation to open these sites up to the public. These sites, in addition to the other thirty-five undeveloped parks, properties that we have that have been acquired or dedicated as park space, and many of these have been sitting idle for decades. With the reinstated Open Space Acquisition CIP, a new project has been created for replacing parks and recreation infrastructure. This is to go with the capital replacement backlog that we have of nearly over thirty million dollars. This project is dedicated to address more of that backlog, nearly eighteen million dollars, the portion that's not covered by the allocated ARPA funds from this fiscal year. And in addition, we, as we hopefully catch up on that backlog in the future, there may be an opportunity to put some focus on adding new park amenities in what we call the over ninety underdeveloped park sites. However, in FY twenty-three, only a million dollars of, is proposed to address this backlog, which is one and a half million dollars less than in previous years. And with that, of course, a few projects that we had planned in FY twenty-three will need to be deferred. That includes the addition of the cricket field at Salem Woods Park, the Lynn Haven Park restroom building replacement and a slight reduction of funding for the needed improvements at Mundan Point Park. On a positive note though, going forward, the proposed CIP does project an increase in funding to address the backlog by one and a half million dollars more per year than in the previous year, starting in FY twenty-four. Moving on to some accomplishments that we're very proud of, the first one is the Woodstock Park, that partnership with HRSD. We're so happy with the results of that and the city's contribution of two million dollars transferred into well over more than four million dollars in parks and rec assets at that facility. Of course, a state-of-the-art skate park that rests on top of the wastewater tank and that innovation that occurred and just that collaboration we had was just, was a great opportunity and experience and a great outcome for the public. And I hope they're enjoying that experience at Woodstock Park. Our next recent accomplishment is for Marshview Park. That was opened up in August of twenty twenty-one. Added a new dog park to the park system inventory, additional parking, multi-purpose fields as well as multi-use trails. Also, we have a partnership with the Eastern Virginia Mountain Bike Association and to develop some formal mountain biking trail systems. It'll be the first in the area. And also, the Parks and Rec Foundation is contributing some dollars for signage and trail markers for that trail system. And we also have a Boy Scout raising funds to purchase and install a bike repair station for that facility coming up. Couple of projects that we do have underway are under construction. The first one is the Great Neck Indoor Pavilion that replaces a very old restroom facility in an old storage barn and creates a new park restroom building and an indoor rentable space for the community to host receptions, anniversaries and other celebrations. It's a little revenue generator for the department and its anticipated completion is for fall this year. Also, the Princess Anne Athletic Complex Sports Management Building replaces a portable trailer and has been used as the sports management office for almost twenty years and is literally falling apart. So a new permanent pre-engineered metal building will be constructed and provide the needed space for this team to operate effectively. And that anticipation completion of that is scheduled for next winter. And we're also excited about the improvements coming to Level Green Park, which is currently under design. And that will replace all of the declining park amenities at that site as well as include a splash pad, a new restroom and expanded parking. And completion is for summer of twenty twenty-three. Probably slightly behind, probably more like fall of twenty twenty-three. And for some challenges, I mentioned some of those along the way in the presentation. And of course, we're also experiencing the same challenges as others who are needing contractors and the labor market as well as the price increases and availability of materials and those long lead times for materials. And also, we know that the Parks and Recreation CIP backlog, even with the ARPA fund infusions that we're thankful for, as that backlog will continue to grow and the proposed CIP funding does not catch us up anytime soon. And then with this last slide on the summary to wrap up, Michael Kirschman would like to provide you with a summary and closing remarks.
Make it quick, Michael.
All right, we're behind. So just real quick, thank you Chad very much. First of all, again, like Chad said, I want to thank the council for the ARPA funding. The ARPA funding is going to make a huge bite out of the apple in our deferred maintenance. But, like it says but up there, but, that's forty percent of the deferred maintenance. And the deferred maintenance backlog is continuing to grow. So as you can see, three years from now, we're right back where we were last year, even after applying fifteen million dollars to the deferred maintenance backlog. So I just want everybody to understand that, that in a few years, we're kind of right back to where we were with a thirty, thirty-five million dollar backlog in deferred maintenance. The other thing is, as I mentioned, we are somewhat, you know, kicking the can down the road on the rec centers. This will be two years in a row of not providing any capital funding. You saw the one picture of the pump at Bayside that exploded a couple of weeks ago with the shut to pull down. Things are getting old. We have old rec centers and we don't have the money to maintain them even at current level, let alone renovate them. The other one is bikeways and trails. Trails are the number one thing people want across the country and this community as well. And we have a four hundred thousand, four hundred seventy-five thousand dollar a year allocation for trails. That will build a third of a mile a year on average, if that, or a quarter. You're talking anywhere from one and a half to two million dollars per mile for a ten wide, ten foot wide bike trail. So we're not, trails are suffering and yet they're the number one amenity that the public's asking for. And then we have some significant things coming down the pike. We know that the Little Island Fishing Pier is going to hit end of life pretty soon and that will not be an inexpensive fix at all. And we also know that the four rec centers, what we call the big three in Sea-Tac, there's great needs there as well in addition to the VB Trail. So I just wanted to put that all in perspective. The needs are great. I know the challenges are even greater for the city and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Aaron and then Barbara. Michael, I didn't see in the funding, the funding for a cat park. Is that not in the CIP?
Much to the chagrin of some people who thought it was coming, there was a small, small percentage of people who thought it was real, but that was really a great April Fools' joke by our marketing team. It, the engagement went through the roof on that one. It was, it was pretty good. Okay, thank you.
The Foxfire Trail, I think that's been a notice that there was a willingness to have a public hearing. I guess there will be and do you know when it will be?
We actually had that citizen information meeting last night. Yeah, we, we sent that out. Should have got the email, but we had about fifteen citizens show up. Three to four were kind of had the concerns and the rest of the group were in support. And we just talked, talked through the plans, talked about the issues, the timeline.
I can talk with you about that. I'm sorry I didn't get the notification. The Little Island Parking Lot Improvements, which are so needed because, you know, when you get down to Little Island and there's no place to park, you're at the end of the line, you can't just keep going. You had to turn around and go back or either park in wherever you find a place and that's what's happening. How long will it take to get that inoper- I know, how long does it take to build it?
Won't take long to build. We're, we have existing plans that are approved, but we got to go back and get those modified based on current standards, but most of the stuff will transfer. So we're getting those plans modified. We got the scope of services to hire the consultant to get those things done. We got to get permitting and wetlands permitting and that joint permit application reactivated and recurrent again. And then we, we're even going to be able to use an annual services contractor to construct. So that'll be a quicker opportunity. So probably by early spring next year, we should be building.
Do you think it would be next year available?
When it starts construction.
Yeah, I don't know whether it'll be complete by the summer.
Two years at least before it's open.
Can't you just use some gravel for one year or something? I mean, the parking is so bad down there, especially, it was really bad with the COVID, you know, because nobody could go to the other beaches. I'm assuming that won't happen again, but.
Good news is we have an existing plan, so we're able to take that and not, we're not starting from scratch. So we're able to condense the timeframe as much as possible.
And the open space, now we do have a dedicated funding source for that. That's still going to be the meals tax, what we approved back in two thousand. Now that money is going to be going to open space. So we're not changing the dedicated funding source. Will it go, I think it did get, it started at point four four percent and then it got changed down to point two two, but is it going back to point four four or what are we doing with that?
Yeah, it's been point four four, point four four.
Point four four, because we still owe some on the bond.
The debt service.
The bonds and what so it's going back to the point four four percent of the meal tax. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff.
Great, thank you everyone.
Thank you. Linwood.
I just want to commend Chad and another member of staff was at the Bay Fund Advisory Commission meeting last week. They did a wonderful job. Very proud of the customer service they provided at that meeting. Good job.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Daniel Adams from Public Works will provide an update on the coastal CIP.
Howdy.
Daniel, is it official?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Duhany.
If you don't know, Daniel is our new official CIP Program Director for the coastal program. So congratulations.
Thanks very much.
There you go.
So good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to present the FY twenty-three Coastal Section Capital Improvement Program. It's again similar format to the other briefings you've seen. We'll briefly go over the summary of the projects with no changes, focus on a couple of new projects and programs with some major changes and touch on some accomplishments and challenges. Certainly, the bulk of our funding for the coastal section is for beach replenishment. Over in about sixty-six percent goes to placing sand on the beaches. This is a summary of our nine projects in the beach replenishment program with no changes. And a summary of our neighborhood, our navigation dredging projects. We have nine navigation dredging projects and programs. This includes a replacement of the Rudy Two dredge, improvements of the dredge operations facility and Pleasure House Point mitigation project. And lastly, our Neighborhood Navigation Dredging SSD Program Funding Summary. We now have eight SSD projects adopted to date. We've completed dredging on five of those. We have one underway, a Shilling Point dredging. And we have two, we have yet to complete first cycle, Hertz Cove and Gilson Cove, but we have good news to report on that. We've now secured a dredge transfer station that will allow us to bid that along with the Eastern Branch dredging project late this year and get that underway in early twenty twenty-three. And we have a second cycle of dredging planned for Old donation in Bayville Creek in FY twenty-three and a second cycle of dredging for Shadow Lawn and Harbor Point planned for FY twenty-four. So two new projects to highlight that are in the budget, Croatan Shoreline Management and Rudy Inlet Wear Replacement. Croatan Shoreline Management, this project provides a long-term funding source to maintain and manage shoreline erosion at Croatan Beach. This is for, for future cycles of replenishment. This is based on placing fifty thousand cubic yards on Croatan Beach on an assumed five-year cycle or as needed and happy to report that Croatan has received sand this week as part of the Rudy Inlet Channel dredging project. And that project, we'll talk about a little bit more in a second. So our second new project is replacement of the Rudy Inlet Wear. It's the device that allows the natural drift of sand to move from south to north across Rudy Inlet. The Rudy Two City Dredge operates in the sand trap. We've had failures on the wear cap. Two sections have failed, popped off and have been repaired. Repairs are holding. A third section has recently popped off. Repairs are currently being made. But now's the time to take a better look at that and fund a full replacement of the wear to ensure that the wear and jetty infrastructure continues to function as designed. And a couple of projects to, with, with major changes. The Eastern Branch Lynn Haven River dredging project, we're proposing a two million dollar transfer in appropriations to date from Rudy Inlet Outer Deposition Basin Maintenance to support increased costs for property acquisition and dredging for the Eastern Branch of Lynn Haven River. And I'm sorry, I'm behind the slide on you. That's the Eastern Branch Lynn Haven River slide. And as part of that project is the construction of the transfer station to serve dredging in the Eastern Branch of the Lynn Haven River. We recently acquired property. We closed on, on that sale on August, I'm sorry, April eighth. And we will be soon receiving bids for the demolition of the existing building. We have plans prepared for some site improvements for a transfer facility to, we have to drive some sheet piling, do some shoreline stabilization work to make the site suitable to site an excavator to offload dredge material. And this is going to allow us to move forward with the Eastern Branch Gilson and Hertz Cove project and start dredging that main channel in those neighborhoods in early twenty twenty-three. Major accomplishments, first and foremost, Rudy Inlet Federal Dredging, long-awaited project. We ideally like to dredge Rudy Inlet fully on a three to five-year cycle. It's been about seven years since the last full-depth dredging event. So this is a bit long-awaited. We've, the project should wrap up this afternoon. It removed two hundred and thirty-three thousand cubic yards of sand from the Rudy Inlet Channel System and placed that material on the resort beach south of the pier and on Croatan Beach. And the second project we want to brag about is coming up next month, the restoration of Ocean Park Beach as part of the Thimble Shoal Phase of the Norfolk Harbor Deepening Project. We've partnered with the Port of Virginia. So we're obtaining four hundred thousand cubic yards of sand to allow us to restore Ocean Park Beach. That project is scheduled to begin May nineteenth. It will last about a month. Should wrap up in early June. Then next, we're going to turn our sights on Cape Henry Beach. We've got some erosional hotspots on the eastern end of Cape Henry Beach. We have an opportunity and a need to evacuate the sand stockpile at the Book Ramp and Beach Facility. It's full, so we need to evacuate that material, place it where we need it on Cape Henry Beach. And we will be doing some berm containment work and getting that site set up for future cycles of dredging and storage. The most eroded area of Cape Henry Beach is, like I said, the east end near the former Duckin Gazebo and the areas in front of Harbor Point condominium. And then we have an opportunity midsummer, again, to partnering with the Army Corps of Engineers for a contract dredging event similar to the one we just completed at Rudy Inlet for Lynn Haven Inlet. And we typically alternate placement of the sand generator from that project. It's up to two hundred thousand cubic yards. We alternate placement each time we do that between Ocean Park and Cape Henry. The last cycle was completed in twenty seventeen, I believe. The material did go on Cape Henry Beach. But since we're getting ready to restore Ocean Park next month, the intent is to go back to Cape Henry Beach with that sand placement next, next summer. And we also have, we restored Chesapeake Beach or Chick's Beach in twenty sixteen, seventeen and we're getting set up for our first re-nourishment of Chesapeake Beach in FY twenty-three. So coastal challenges, we have a few. Of course, dedicated funding has made all the difference in the world in mitigating storm damages along our shorelines. And we need to maintain our federal partnerships with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, who we lease the sand resources for Sandbridge Beach. We, we've had the opportunity with the Norfolk Harbor Deepening to obtain sand from the Harbor Deepening Project. Deepening project. And what that allows us to do is preserve that offshore shoal. If we were working with the Port of Virginia and Army Corps to use the next phase of the project, the Atlantic Channel Phase, and place sand on as many beaches as we can find room to fit that sand, but that'll preserve that offshore shoal at Sandbridge. And also, we have a shoal that we use to nourish Chesapeake Beach. It's located between the first island and the Bay Bridge Tunnel and the beach. And again, if we can use the Harbor Deepening material, that'll preserve that resource for future cycles. So beneficial use of dredge material and regional sediment management planning are our two efforts that we're going to utilize to help manage our sand resources. With that, we happy to take any questions.
Any discussion? Okay, Guy and then Barbara.
Thank you very much. And I know the folks in Croatan who talked to me on a number of occasions are happy to get some relief. I'm just curious about the amount that's scheduled to put in their 50,000, the 50,000 cubic yards is, it says approximately 50,000 cubic yards saying to maintain the design berm within dune structure on a five-year cycle. Do we, do we think that's enough or that's just what we can afford?
We think that's enough. We did a study a few years ago after we had some dune erosion at Croatan Beach.
Right, I saw a study that had the, the one with the diagram that showed, showed what the berm sort of, I guess that's the ideal of where you're trying to get.
But the design is to, is to be able to maintain a 100-foot-wide recreational beach area, not just for recreation, but for, for beach maintenance and emergency access vehicles and to prevent overtopping of the dune. So that was designed based on.
That's like 150 yards from the high water mark to the.
About 100 feet from the toe of the dune to the, to the mean high water mark.
Okay.
And we think 50,000 a year on a five-year cycle is enough to maintain that dimension of beach.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and Barbara.
You mentioned projects to be proud of. Well, you've mentioned Sandbridge, but I think Sandbridge is probably one of the best things that the city council has ever done. And, and when you look at your challenges and you see this picture of the Sandbridge Beach during the 1991 Northeastern, we see what Sandbridge used to look like. And because the neighborhood really came together on that one in 94, we, we established the SSD and the community agreed, of course, they didn't know to begin with that they were going to be paying for all of it because we thought part of it was going to be federal, but as it's turned out, the communities paid for that, that beach. And two years ago, we looked at the SSD and the TIF, and the audit showed that we were able to do away with the TIF, it was no longer needed, and we reduced the SSD from six cents to four cents. And at that time, the, the response was, it's doing really, really well, and we may be able to look at it in a couple of years. And so it's a couple of years. I, I think we can reduce the SSD another two cents very comfortably. When I look at what's coming in now with the new assessments and how well the other sources are doing with that, I would, I think you all got a copy of this report in your agenda package, but that started out at 12 cents. I think this said six cents, but it started out at 12 cents. And it's been, the SSD has been reduced several times because the way that beach has operated is so successful, the assessments of the property have skyrocketed and come up with much more than had been originally expected, plus the lodging taxes do very well down there. And I, I really think that we need to look seriously at reducing this another two cents, bringing it from four cents down to two cents. And I think when, I didn't bring that bulky, bulky book that we've got with the, the CIP in it, but it looks to me like we're, we're very comfortable in the amount that is coming in, and so I hope we can look at that as something we can do this year.
Hey, anybody else? You know, just a quick question, Louis might have asked that. Is there any plans, you know, a couple of months ago, we went out to Ocean Park and their dunes were starting to fall and they were losing their beach. Any plans for out there?
Yeah, that's the project I mentioned, the first phase of the Norfolk Harbor Deepening, sand from the Thimble Shoals Channel. We're getting 400,000 cubic yards and that work should start next month.
Oh, super.
May 19th, and it's going to make a tremendous difference. That'll be the, the largest volume of material we've ever placed on Ocean Park Beach.
Wow.
And the dredge that you have out there now, it's huge.
It is huge.
It's so much bigger than the little Rudy, one that was always putting along, but this, this thing is really big.
Great. Mr. Dehaney, I just want to say that we have to note that a lot of these projects are happening all over Virginia Beach. You know, when you look about any type of stormwater, the CIPs and everything, you know, I think every district is, you know, being included and, you know, it's a real global look at things and how you're doing it. And I just want to give you all kudos for what you're doing.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Glenn Wood.
Just one quick one. And the Sandbridge is a great success. It was a seven to four vote. Thankfully, it prevailed because it's paid off handsomely to the city. And the CWAL project was another big one and with federal participation for, I believe it was 50 years. Is that still, we're still getting federal funding participation on that project?
We are, that's, they have met their federal goal on cost participation for the resort beach project.
Federal, one-third local match? Yeah, and it's still ongoing. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Outstanding work. Thank you. Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, the last presentation I pointed is just the update on the operating budget for the Communications Department. So the next presentation will be the last one before we go into council comments unless you feel otherwise, Mayor.
Okay, we'll take your advice in council. And just to let everybody know, Mr. Jones had to step out to a meeting, but he will be back for the public hearing tonight.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, we'll give a presentation on the Economic Development CIP.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me. I'm Emily Archer. I'm a project manager with Economic Development. On behalf of my department, Planning, Parking Management, Convention and Visor Borough and Public Works, I'm presenting the Economic Tourism Development CIP for FY23 through 28. Quickly, we have about 34 projects total in our CIP. The first 18 with no change are listed here. The ones in darker blue that you see in the chart are all tourism infrastructure, tourism investment program tip funded, as you're aware. The only two with a balance to complete are both 17th Street, Phases 1 and 2. And the remaining eight without change, the ones in gray, top two, have partial federal and state funding in them, and then the one lighter blue is a Town Center SSD-funded project. There are 11 with modifications requested this year. The first eight, I'm going to cover a few of these in more detail after the charts, but just to point out, the Sports Center, there's about $5 million requested for modifications for storage for the building now that it's operational. Again, all the dark blue are tip proposed, tip funded. Burton Station, Phase 2 through there, the out-year $7 million is really to complete the rest of Tolliver Road, Arrow Avenue and unlock the development potential of that area and facilitate the Burton Station SGA vision. A change this year, the Economic Development Investment Program is back in the CIP. Last year, it was transferred out to the operating budget, so it's a change coming back into the CIP. And then the remaining three with changes, the Commercial Area Vitalization Flood Resiliency Program was formerly known as Housing and Neighborhood Strategy, received a $99,000 FEMA grant this year, and the commercial revitalization study is currently underway, being led by Mark Shea and Planning, and is expected to be complete by the end of 2022. Both the, kind of the parking-funded ones are requesting an additional million for the oceanfront from the Parking Enterprise Fund, is requesting a million dollars from that fund to help with revenue control system upgrades that, and additional fiber and cameras for the garages, similarly in Town Center. A million is requested from the Town Center SSD for this, to the CIP to replenish the fund after fountain repairs and red garage post tendon blowout. To highlight a few of them with modifications, Atlantic Avenue Streetscape improvements, this is really for the full redesign and revitalization of Atlantic Avenue, coming out of the Resort Area Mobility Plan concepts that are being tested now between 17th and 20th Street, the AV project on Atlantic Avenue. The project is anticipated to be seven to eight blocks, implemented in seven to eight blocks every off-season for about five, five off-seasons. Significant increase is requested in the Resort Parking District Fund to really position the CIP for anticipated garage and parking opportunities throughout the resort to really have public parking availability throughout all 40 blocks. $625,000 is requested for Lynn Haven Parkway Corridor improvements. This project is, the design is complete and awaiting a few remaining right-of-way easements dedications before construction could start at the end of this year if we get those. The $625,000 is really needed for escalating construction costs and material inflations since the budget was originally established in 2017. We have five new projects with a real focus on tourism. Again, all in blue are the tip proposed funding for the projects. Resort Area Acquisition is really to position the CIP for anticipated acquisition opportunities in the coming year. I'm going to cover 17th Street and Corporate Landing in more detail, but let me go back one, the Sports Tourism Infrastructure Project. See, the top is really citywide to help sports tourism, but it's really, the focus is that Princess Anne Commons and Hampton Road Soccer Complex to really make those facilities more competitive regionally and in the Mid-Atlantic. The Visitor Information Services Building at the end of 264 and Parks Avenue is underutilized, and this million dollars is really to study providing holistic visitor information services and the digital platform and what kind of, how the building could be repurposed there as well. So another new project I'd like to point out is Corporate Landing Business Park. There's about 165 acres remaining in the park that are undeveloped, about 90 are developable. This CIP would really fund the infrastructure needed to open those parcels up with the roadway and stormwater design. There's about nine parcels that could potentially follow suit quickly after the infrastructure projects are completed. The 17th Street Regional Stormwater Management Facility, this is just south of the new Sports Center, south of Virginia Beach Boulevard or 17th Street. This, what would it look like if all the property is a regional wet pond? It would really help reduce flooding along the corridor and support economic development along the corridor. It's kind of lumped together, but the 18.7 million is split between two years in FY24 and '25 for design and construction. We have a number of projects underway, including oceanfront restrooms and a new canopy over the 31st Street stage, which should all be under construction this coming fall, as well as Fountain Plaza repairs and not shown, but a new microtransit program at the oceanfront coming out of the Resort Area Mobility Plan. And then lastly, although 19th Street was completed two years ago, we've really gained some recognition this past year, including one North American Hardscape Award, a Mid-Atlantic Public Works Award, and two statewide Landscape Architecture Award and Engineering Company Award. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Rosemary.
It's probably just, I've got the Economic Development operating.
We don't have the CIP.
We don't have this one.
That was in last week's packet.
I was going to say, it was probably in last week's packet. There's so many.
Oh, I didn't bring it either. We can have that sent out.
We will.
Anybody else? Okay, you got a lot of outstanding stuff. Boy, you're really game changers out there doing some great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that was the last presentation.
Okay, granted, any council comments or initiatives?
I just got.
Okay, Sabrina and then Linwood.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I have a couple of comments. One, just want to recognize tomorrow as Administrative Professional Day and to say thank you to our administrative support, particularly Amanda and Terry, but also wider in the department, because I, I know how of a tough and challenging job it can be. I was an administrative professional for many years before I came onto council, and I know how difficult it is to, to serve everyone and to make sure everyone has what they need. So just want to say thank you in advance. Thank you for all that you do and highlight Administrative Professional Day because that is a very important day. So thank you. The other item I would like to talk about in comments, recently I saw a news report about property that Virginia Beach owns and the homeless who live on, in that area and the, the person, Robert DeAngelis, I believe is his name. The matter went to court and the people on the property, the homeless individuals, they have to move, starting in July. And I'm interested in getting more of the facts on that story, but I, I was really, and, and the reason I bring it up is because I want to see if we can handle this matter in maybe an amicable way. First, helping, seeing if there's anything we can do to help the individuals who are being displaced because the, the court said they have to move off of that property. Apparently, Mr. DeAngelis has been helping them for the last eight years and supporting them, and so they have to move because the property's, of course, not zoned for that. And so several times, he mentioned, what can the city of Virginia Beach do? How can they help us? And so I, I want to address that. I want to see how we can help Mr. Dehaney, perhaps in working with the Human Services Department, how we can make that transition better for them and whatever we can do to, to address that need, because it's very, very serious. You know, we are oftentimes looked, looked upon, judged by the way we treat homeless individuals, the poor. It's very important how we handle that matter. So I, I'd like to maybe talk with you about that and see how we can help. And so, yeah, that, the other thing that came to mind is we are voted as, you know, the most caring city, and so we, we really need to address that matter. And so just wanted to, to bring that matter to light, to see how we can address it. So I look forward to talking to you, Mr. Dehaney, about how we can address it.
Good. Linwood.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an observation, having listened to all the briefings of the departments, I think the one that gives me the most concern about backlog issues is our Parks and Recreation Department. And I don't know how we got so far behind. I know we're stressed in this budget trying to do the all things to everybody, but I really hope we look very hard at a strategy for next year to address some of these shortfalls and backlogs and all that sort of thing. That, to me, stood out as the most stressed department in terms of infrastructure needs and what have you.
Okay, thank you, Guy.
I would just like to say, it's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, Linwood literally took the words out of my mouth. It seems clear to me, we really have a crisis brewing and, and we, we are a big city. We have lots, I mean, we just have to adjust to the fact that because we are big, we can't ignore these problems. We, the investment that we already have and that we need to make, we just have to have a strategy to deal with that. We can't do it piecemeal. I think doing it piecemeal is just going to result in more of the same. We need an overall strategy and it, it's. We need an overall strategy, and it's not going to be easy. I'm not saying it's going to be easy, but I think we have to pull together and do that for Parks and Rec. It just touches so many lives, and we are such a, the demand for the kinds of facilities we have from our citizens, they make lots of demands for schools, for public safety, for all. But if you come to Virginia Beach, you expect to be able to recreate, and it is a city of joy, a city that people come to, to live an outdoor life, and when the weather isn't so good, and we know sometimes it's too hot or too cold, or really, we need to have places indoors as well. So we've got a lot of challenges, but I hope we will spend some time on strategic planning for how we get ourselves ahead of this. We are certainly behind the curve on it right now, and we need to get ahead of it.
Hey, Barbara.
Not one of those heavy things, but everything is important. And unfortunately, I should have brought this to you last week, and it just got overlooked. But we had a notification from the Virginia Board on Geographic Names, that an individual had suggested a name for what is an unnamed inlet in the neighborhood down in the southern part of the city, along Sandbridge. And the question was, did we want to comment on this proposed name, which this individual has suggested? And so when this was brought to my attention by the City Manager's Office a couple of months ago, the first thing I said was, well, everything on Back Bay has got a name, that's for sure. And so it was to set out to find out whether or not this was, already had a name. And so I've worked with the community, with the longtime folks there, and the Back Bay Restoration Foundation. We had a really neat gathering one night, and it's kind of, this is a man-made quote inlet, it came about with the development of Sandbridge. And this individual is suggesting that it be named Kona Inlet, K-O-N-A inlet. And the response overwhelming from everybody was, well, if you're going to name it something, it really ought to be something that has some relationship to the area. And if the council wants to make a comment one way or the other, I think we have to do it by May first, or we can ask for an extension. But the report back I've gotten unanimously is, it ought to be something, I think the Back Bay Restoration Foundation said, maybe it should be Ship's Bay Inlet, or at least a name that has something to do with the area. So that's the feedback that I got from the community, if we want to take a position one way or the other, or ask for an extension so we can talk about it some more. But that's my report to you on this question.
Thank you. Rosemary, then Aaron.
As we try to get through this budget process, I think so much is pointed out to us, we are a very, very large city, and there's a tremendous amount of needs, and one of the things we have to do is find a balance. We've got to find a balance. We can't do everything for everyone, but hopefully we can do enough that we can all come together. So the mayor and I met with the manager this afternoon, and Kevin Chanticleer, he is a jewel, he is absolutely an amazing jewel, and we're still working through it. We're not there yet, but I think a lot of you know that we're trying to remember the, what we're going to remember, that the voters, almost seventy-three percent, said we're willing to pay more because we need the stormwater issues taken care of in the city. And so, but then we know that assessments have gone up a tremendous amount. So where do we find that balance? And our current rate is ninety-nine cents. So what we're aspiring to do is to, because of the huge increase in the assessments, is to lower that rate from ninety-nine to ninety-five cents. But then we also need to remember the four cents that the voters voted on. So if we can do that, that'll take the ninety-five up to the ninety-nine, which is where we are now, and that will include the very important flooding, stormwater issues that the voters told us loud and clear. I mean, most of us would love to have an election that good, to have almost seventy-three percent. So the other, we're trying to get through the compensation. I think the flooding and the compensation are the two really big items that we've got to handle this year, and there's a lot of other things that we've got to do too to create that balance. But because we are in a labor crisis, this is the time of the great resignation, and people are leaving their jobs, and we've got a really big city to run, and we've heard from our employees, and we value them. We can't do it, I mean, they make us look good, and they provide services to our city. So that's really a huge, huge issue, and we've got $32.8 million to figure out how to spend that to make sure our employees have a good compensation package. So we know that the step plan is really important, but not just the step plan, we want a step plan for years of service, not years in grade, that's what we're hearing loud and clear. And that's a really big amount of money, and so Patrick and his people are going to really work on that, and it may be that we have to sort of phase some of that in. And we've talked to a lot of the leaders and the employees, and to them, it's really important that we firm, have a firm foundation. We have to have a firm foundation to build, to build a step plan on. So if we get that foundation right, then we work on it this year, and then we can continue to work on it to get, till we get to where we really want to be. So getting that foundation right is going to be really critical. So we're doing that. We really want to do a good increase for the part-time people. I mean, I know Parks, we're talking about Parks and Rec and all of their needs, but their needs of their people is their greatest need, and they have a thousand part-time people. Think about that. So Patrick, you've got a tall order to fill.
You only got a couple of weeks, though, don't worry about it.
You need to be able to fill something next week. So these are, these are the really big items, and everything's important. And I really believe that you have built an incredible budget, and that you took in so many needs of our city, and to, it's just amazing what you've done. And you've been here a short amount of time, but I think you're just a brilliant city manager, that's really tuned in to what people are saying. And I, as a person, am really grateful to what you've done. But I just wanted the council and the public to kind of know, we're not there yet, but we will be, right? We're counting on you. So anyway, I've been talking to everyone, and will continue to talk to everyone, and we may not get every single thing everybody wants, but we're going to do our best. But the most important thing is, we need to take care of our employees. We need to take care of our employees, and we need to make sure we listen to what the voters said with that bond referendum. So anyway, I hope that was okay what I said, Bobby.
Oh, we're fine. You know, we've just got to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. Thank you, and Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three comments. The first comment is, I agree with Councilmember Guy and Branch about really taking a holistic look at our red centers, and I've asked the city manager to see what we can do, look at it comprehensively, see if we can address that in our budget, in our next budget, you know, hearing from concerns, especially from the residents of Sea-Tac, and I understand hearing from residents also out there in Creighton, how we really need to understand the true asset our red center is holding, and what is it the plan going forward to really modernize it in some cases. So I've sent an email to the city manager on that. The other one is, is my youthful intern here, this is his last day here, and so I just wanted to thank him for his commitment to really get involved civically, to engage us civically, and understand what local government is about, and I watched him grow over the period of time, he's, the short period of time, being that we have some of our speakers here who come to council can really test you, and I've watched him be a very disciplined young man, and so I wanted to say, Ari, it's been a pleasure, and thank you for even wanting to learn from me and learn from this body as well. The other, you know, big announcement is, I'm not sure everyone's seen it, but Something in Water has moved to Washington DC. And so with that, I have prepared a couple remarks I'd just like to read. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Farrell Williams and the entire Something in Water team for his monumental move to have Something in Water Festival in our nation's capital, Washington DC, during a weekend where the country recognizes the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans on Juneteenth, AKA Freedom Day. I mean, that's just, it's simply phenomenal when you think about it. And I understand that from the standpoint of understanding the work that goes in behind the scenes to bring a festival of that size to the forefront. I'm as a city liaison to Something in Water Festival, and it's the inaugural year, I am, and I remain truly proud of the great work and collaboration of city staff, responders, and the community. This festival meant so much to our city and future generations. We laid the foundation, the first year to have this be our city's biggest annual event, one that grew every single year, but instead, we just got to host it just one time. So I'm truly excited and supportive about the festival moving to Washington DC. I cannot help but to reflect on what a loss for our city and region this is. Economically, Something in Water Festival had a $24.7 million economic impact for our city and region. It actually made money in its first year. But I left our city with a feeling that we missed out on a huge break for our arts, our culture, and something that would help define our identity as a region. Immediately after the economic impact results were reported, I implored this council to solidify a true partnership with Mr. Williams and the festival, where we shared the risk and rewards. Unfortunately, council saw otherwise. Mr. Williams answered our call for help for, on a historically problematic weekend, presented a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and somehow, Mr. Williams was shown the door. This leads me to an agonizing question of why and how our council will let a culturally and economically great festival get away. It also leads me to wonder yet again, how can we declare that we are truly open for business, and yet let a festival like Something in Water, that generated a $24.7 million economic impact for our city and region, get away? That question still bothers me to the side. But nonetheless, I'm grateful for the visionary leadership of Farrell Williams and this lasting commitment to our city, they gave him everything. I'm also grateful that he has created the ways in which Virginia Beach residents can still enjoy the festival, with round-trip shuttles to Washington DC. So while thousands of people across the nation are making their plans to head to the nation's capital for this incredible event, celebrating the emancipation of African-Americans and celebrating diverse cultures, so many of us here in Virginia Beach, including myself, find the announcement kind of bittersweet. But one thing is clear today, our city leadership has a lot of reflection to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If I could just say briefly, the other day, I got to meet, a pleasure to meet, with a delegation from Ukrainian Heritage, and it was a very productive meeting, and a couple things came forward. I just want to let council know of a couple of initiatives that went forward. First of all, they were extremely grateful for us changing the lights on the Lesnar Bridge, and then I went to a event at their church on Sunday, and they are active. We are now in preliminary, and I'm just saying preliminary discussions with sister cities about maybe doing a sister city, probably with a city like Odessa, or a port city, they have naval presence, you know, they're kind of a tourist thing, they're right on the Black Sea, they're known for their beaches, and you know, this could be, but once again, very preliminary things moving forward. But the other thing, they asked for a place for storage, because they need a place where donations come in. As you know, this is a country of war, and you know, and I'll say upfront that, you know, half my heritage is Ukrainian, but they needed a space where donations can go so they can transport. And I'm proud to say that one of our business owners, and once it becomes solidified, I'll make the announcement, volunteered space for them to do this. Once again, we are that caring city. And you know, once again, Aaron and I appreciate your remarks, and you know, once again, we were going to, we're going to hold that olive branch out to get, regrettably, we've lost a year with the COVID. One of the toughest decisions we had to make was canceling a whole bunch of events that day, but you know, be assured that olive branch will be continued to be a thing. But at this point, if it's okay, if we can adjourn into, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews; perspective to candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance; demotions, salaries, disciplining, or resignations of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A11. Council appointees, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, and we are adjourned into, we are adjourned into recess. We have certified the closed session, do we have a motion? Mr. Tower, do we have a second?
Second. Mr. Tower, may I have your vote? Thank you. My vote of nine to zero, and Mr. Moss abstaining, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
I abstain because I was not in the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and you know, we're not out of executive.